Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown? Mulbrook?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here, we have a quorum.
And for the record, councilmember Jacobson will not be joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you. And as per our council rules, after national hall for one of the four national holidays, when we have a council meeting that follows Memorial Day, we say the Pledge of Allegiance. So I invite you to stand and join me in saying the pledge. So you're going to get a view of our stomachs as we stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States.
The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. That's from the May 11, 2020 meeting.
Move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Were there any corrections? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't think we have any tonight. All right, next section of the agenda is public input and presentations. We'll begin with public input, and that'll be followed by the two presentations listed on the agenda. We have a very full agenda tonight, so I wanted to go over the council rules as far as public input. First of all, over the past week to 10 days, we've received a number of emails related to the goose harvest in Crystal Lake Park. Some of these came from local residents, many of them came from around the country. They've been shared with the Urbana Park District. I want to remind the public that the city of Urbana does not own or manage Crystal Lake Park, and those management's decisions are made by the Park District and the Park District Board. So we will not be reading those emails aloud tonight, but they have been shared with the Park District. Given the number of emails that we've received and the amount of public input that I expect we'll get, we have a three-minute rule, so public input is limited to three minutes. And we have the option of if people are, emails especially are repetitive and the same message, we will summarize the message, indicate who sent them, and they will all be entered into the record, but not necessarily read completely. So first up, I'll turn it over, and city clerk will read the email input, and then we'll go to people who wish to speak to the council tonight.
Okay, I'll start with Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And then I'm going to group the ones related to Aleah Lewis next. The first one is River Brown. "I am grateful that our pleas have reached you, and you're willing to push forward for an entirely independent review of the 41020 incident. I am grateful you're willing to allow a third-party investigation to take place. I hope moving forward, you continue to work closely with our local NAACP to determine that it is truly independent investigation. Please continue to keep Aleah in your hearts and minds, and please place this issue on the weekly agenda until it has been independently reviewed. Please push, push, push for these charges to be dropped against Aleah. Our hope is in your hands. Use this moment to take a stance against police violence. If we let this slip past us with no justice for Aleah, it will only embolden the police in Urbana and around the country to continue, and the next case of police violence could be fatal. The next case of police violence could be your neighbor, your friend, your partner, or child. Stand up against police violence. Our hope is in your hands. Work with the local NAACP leadership to develop a truly independent investigation and drop all charges against Aleah." Thank you. Next is from Chelsea Birchmeyer. "I previously wrote to express my outrage and disappointment at the harm caused by the incident of police brutality that occurred on April 10 and the subsequent response by the Urbana Police Department and the city of Urbana. I want to reemphasize the necessity of the city taking the following actions to prevent further harm. The third-party investigation of the incident must not be done by state police in the interest of accountability, transparency, and maintaining trust with the community. Two, the charges against Aleah Lewis must be dropped due to police use of excessive force and refusal to use de-escalation tactics." Thank you. Next is Patrick Kimitas. "My name is Patrick Kimitas, and I've been a resident of Urbana for the past five years. I'm writing with regards to the violent arrest of Ms. Aleah Lewis on April 10. Having seen the publicly available video footage of Ms. Lewis's arrest, I'm appalled that the use of force review board found no wrongdoing on the part of the arresting officers. The police officers in the video are clearly acting with excessive violence. Ms. Lewis is thrown to the ground, punched in the head, and has an assault rifle shoved into her back while being detained by three heavily armed officers. I find it difficult to believe that any objective observer could watch the available videos and conclude that the officers were behaving in a safe and appropriate manner. Unfortunately, the actions of the officers are just another instance of the racial disparities in our criminal justice system, both in America broadly and in the Champagne County and Urbana specifically. In 2017, the Champagne County Racial Justice Task Force reported that while only 30% of citizens of Champagne County are people of color, people of color account for 63% of the Champagne jail population. Similarly, also in 2017, a report found that black drivers were 66% more likely to be stopped by Urbana police than expected, given the makeup of the city's population. As a resident of Urbana, I demand that a third-party investigation of the arrest be conducted, and this investigation not be done by the police. This is the only way to ensure transparency and accountability in the investigation. Further, I demand that all charges against Ms. Lewis be dropped." Next is from Ron Kester. "Two weeks ago, Mayor Marlin issued a formal response to the civil rights emergency precipitated by police violence against Aleah Lewis. I would like to know what actions the Urbana City Council have taken since then. Who among you has contacted the state's attorney to insist that charges be dropped against Ms. Lewis? Who among you has contacted Ms. Lewis to offer an apology on behalf of the city for the violence done to her? Who among you has done research to identify the extent to which this instance of violence reflects a pattern of civil rights abuse within the Urbana Police Department? Or perhaps the council members are tacitly siding with the News Gazette's editorial board in its recent claim that the controversy has been dreamed up by members of the black community? If that's your position, then please state it for the record. If however, you believe that preservation of civil rights is just as important as police procedure, then stand up and say so, not privately but in public, for the record and as a representative of the residents of Urbana. I encourage you all to advocate for the following. The officer who knocked Ms. Lewis to the pavement, Michael Cervantes, and the officer beater, Eric Roth, should be put on administrative leave pending the completion of the independent investigation. A second investigation should be initiated regarding the Urbana police officers who visited the private residence of the citizen journalist who created and posted a video of the incident and pressured him to remove it from social media. Three, a review of the procedures, performance, and mission of Urbana Civilian Police Review Board should be undertaken with a mind toward making it more accessible and effective for all residents of Urbana." Let me move to the computer here. Next is Austin Huffman. "My name is Austin Huffman, and I'm an Urbana resident. I would like to express my emphatic support for an independent and unbiased third-party investigation in the private police department's handling of the arrest of Ms. Aleah Lewis on April 10. In the interest of full transparency and accountability, this investigation should be not be conducted by the state police. According to the ACLU, independent investigators and prosecutors are needed because the city and county authorities are often reluctant to bring charges against police officers who they rely on for evidence in other criminal cases. In addition, all charges against Ms. Lewis should be dropped immediately considering the officers involved initiated the altercation and failed to use the de-escalation tactics they've been trained in. The council may be aware of the horrifying, extruditional police killings of Breonna Taylor in Louisville and just yesterday George Floyd in Minneapolis. These are just the latest examples of American law enforcement's long history of devaluing and targeting black lives. After reviewing the videos of Ms. Lewis's arrest, I am disappointed and deeply disturbed because I feel that our community came dangerously close to experiencing a similar tragedy. There is absolutely no reason why the three officers, one with a rifle that he brandishes carelessly while on top of Ms. Lewis, needed to handle this situation in such a manner. I implore the council to do everything in their power to hold the UPD accountable. If not, I fear this will irreparably damage the community's already waning trust in those who are supposedly sworn to serve and protect us." Next is Aiden Watson Morris. "I'm a resident of Urbana-Champaign, emailing in advance of the city council meeting tonight. I'm emailing to make two requests concerning the recent case involving the Urbana Police and Aleah Lewis, that the third-party investigation of the incident not be done by state police in the interest of true accountability, total transparency, and maintaining trust with the community, that the charges against Aleah Lewis be dropped instead of drug court due to police use of excessive force and their refusal to use de-escalation tactics." Next, related to this is Dottie Vera Weiss. "I am very distressed by the treatment of Ms. Lewis by Urbana police officers on April 10. The level of force used against her appeared to be totally unjustified and was stated in the commentary by many persons of the Champagne County NAACP would probably never have been used against a white woman in that situation. The plan to arrange an independent outside review of the situation is encouraging and must be followed by a full investigation, starting with a 911 call, reviewing each interaction and additional use of force by police officers, and continuing through to arrival at the jail. It must also consider possible alternative actions by the officers, consideration of the city's training requirements, and implementation of them compared with best practices, comparison of the city's use of force guidelines against the best practices, and an assessment of how the department solicits community input and response to it. And finally, there should be a full report to the public on the findings and recommendations. I will be eager to see the report, and we'll be tracking the follow-up. Perhaps most important, as members of the Urbana community, we need a commitment from the police department and the city to take the findings seriously and make changes to assure that everyone that the police officers interact with, regardless of race or age or how they're dressed, is treated with respect. Thank you for taking this serious, this situation seriously." Okay, the next one is from the Party for Socialism and Liberation Champagne-Urbana. "The Urbana Police Department and the city of Urbana are responsible for racist act of police terror. This comes just months after the same city voted to support a contract that increased police presence in Urbana High School. These cops in our schools and on our streets aren't making our community safer, especially when they commit acts of violence against an innocent black woman. The Urbana Police Department doesn't serve and protect us. The Urbana Police Department doesn't serve and protect our neighbors. The only people the Urbana Police Department serve and protect are the wealthy ruling class. The increasingly militarized police forces all across the United States are a tool of white supremacy and capitalism. The police uphold unjust systems of wealth inequality and mass incarceration that keep millions of Americans behind bars without trial during a pandemic. Our local cops have yet again proved that they are no different. We call on our elected officials in the city council of Urbana to take decisive action and hold the police accountable for their blatant disregard for the safety of our communities. The Party for Socialism Liberation stands with our neighbors in demanding the immediate charging of, dropping of charges, of all charges against Ms. Aleah Lewis, and calling for a transparent investigation conducted by an independent third party that is not linked to the police in any way. All power to the people." Next is Emily Blevins. "I am writing in support of the following two requests pertaining to Aleah Lewis, that the third-party investigation of the incident not be done by state police in the interest of true accountability, total transparency, and maintaining trust with the community, that the charges against Aleah Lewis be dropped instead of drug court due to the police's use of excessive force and their unsuccessful use of de-escalation tactics. I know that the city of Urbana aims to be a humane, loving, and safe community, and I'm hopeful the city will handle the investigation of Aleah Lewis's case in a transparent and just manner." Jane McClintock. "I am looking forward to hearing from you about reforms and enhancements to the CPRB in June. Thank you for looking into this critical matter. The health and effectiveness of the CPRB is critical to public safety in Urbana. I'd also like to suggest that you continue to do everything in your power to see that all charges are dropped against the victim of police brutality. As commendable as it is that you have called for an independent investigation, make sure it is truly independent or will be a waste of time." And next is Alan Axelrod. "Firstly, within the last day, the website imagery has changed from the Urbana Free Library to the Urbana Police Department squad cars. This is verifiable using archive.org, and so I ask that the city change the photo to respect the pain caused by the murder of George Floyd by police officers today. Secondly, best practices call for independent criminal investigation. As the CPRB is in a suboptimal state, I recommend that the city consider empowering the CPRB of another city outside of Champagne County. As others have said, please recommend dropping the charges. You can change your recommendation even if it is not authoritative." Okay, and then I've got a number of these related to trees on Green Street. From Gwendolyn Dirk. "Please consider some alterations to your plans on Green Street. The tree canopy in Urbana is something that is irreplaceable. Age trees are distinguishing features of nice neighborhoods. Please consider making these changes. It would be a total loss to the community. Small tree replacements do not have the same effect as their aged counterparts. Trees take a generation to age. These trees need to stay." Next from Unice Weech. "Please save as many as possible of the healthy, older trees along Green that are slated for destruction. Once they're gone, they will be sorely missed." Thank you. From Thomas Allen Schmidt. "Save Green Streets for EMCOR Removal." From Amy Wagner Johnson. "I have learned that the city is planning to remove a lot of trees along Green Street, many of which are healthy and provide many benefits. As a Wuna citizen, I ask that the city to preserve as many of these mature trees as possible to maintain the character and value of the neighborhood, as well as the environmental benefits." From Lois Steinberg. "Thank you for your hard work and dedication. I think felling of trees should be a community decision along with the rationale generated by the EMCOR project. Definitely, the bus stop can be moved. Are the property owners who declined to have a sidewalk go in front of, onto their property homeowner, occupiers, or rental owners? I assume it's the latter. Perhaps they can be convinced further to reroute the sidewalk." From Dan Newman. "It's related to a seven-year-old daughter who lives on Green Street, did an audit of Green Street trees that are scheduled for removal. She used a thumbs-up, thumbs-down scale. Her ratings did not always agree with mine. Neither of us is in a parbrist, but the pictures of the trees are useful to look at. Her ratings are attached, and there are a series of pictures showing his daughter with each of the trees." And then from Dan Newman, there was a follow-up, and I'm just, I'm going to skip the original and just read his follow-up here. All of it will be entered in the record. "Hi, it has been brought to my attention that the city administrator announced that there can be no adjustments to the tree removal list between Race and McCullough Streets, the 200, 300, 400 block of Green, because this would hold up the ongoing work. Two points. One, with regard to two of the trees on these blocks, 208 Urbana Free Library and 411 West Green, it is not clear how not cutting down a tree could delay the ongoing work. Indeed, for these two trees, it seems that not cutting down the tree would actually make the ongoing work faster. For the other trees that are corner trees, 302 West Green and 404 West Green, Timothy John, I understand that accommodating corner trees would delay the ongoing work. It would take a little time to redesign the sidewalk. Redesigning a sidewalk probably takes less than a day. But this might be further complicated by contracts already in place with the contractors to build the sidewalk with particular specs, so it might be too late to save these two corner trees, depending upon the city's and the contractor's willingness to redesign, slightly move the sidewalk by a couple feet. I'm not trying to make this change sound trivial. I understand that these contracts took months to create. I also understand that it would be possible to route the sidewalk around the corner trees." For the other trees, there are easement trees, 306 and 301 West Green. It would probably take several weeks to secure easements that we could save these trees, and more importantly, my understanding is that these property owners were not willing to grant easements to the city to save these trees. So the point is move on these two trees. When the property owner did not agree to forfeit a permanent easement to the city, the trees were scheduled for removal. The punchline, if you remove all the trees on the 200 through 400 blocks of Green from consideration, with the exception of 208 West Green and 411 West Green, which are neither corner trees nor easement trees, then my list of trees to potentially save is windowed down to only 11 trees, not 19. And he lists mature neighborhood trees at 802 West Green, 609 West Green, 508 West Green, 411 West Green, 208 West Green. B, trees on corner, that he considers trees of good or above-average condition, but looking at a corner, I'll be right around these trees for ADA compliance, possible, but would require some more work. It's one tree in that category, 501 grass green. Trees where a bus stop is planned, there's one tree in this category, 601 West Green. Trees in okay shape, past their prime. If these trees were on any street in Urbana, they would be left alone or saved. Every 40-year-old tree has issues, but they're rarely taken as justification to kill the tree. There are four trees in this category, 503, 702, 712, and 802 West Green. Thank you for your considerations." Let's see, then I have from Phyllis. I've got to read that one from the screen here. Excuse me a second. From Phyllis and Joe Williams. "We are not happy about the loss of old trees to accommodate the EMCOR project east of Lincoln. We are encouraged by the efforts to gain easements to allow trees to remain. That is effort which is above and beyond and makes us proud of Urbana. We are encouraged by the selection of trees chosen as replacements. We also realize that the trees being sacrificed are mostly at intersections. These gorgeous trees might not survive the root pruning, they would surely suffer. Or as in the case on Main Street, the tree's roots might undermine the flat, easily-accessed sidewalks. We believe that the, we believe the end product of this massive undertaking will be a pleasant pedestrian flow towards our precious downtown, not the Green Street of our youth. That thoroughfare has chiefly left us." And then from Steve Cartman. "I applaud the efforts of everyone involved trying to keep as many trees as possible. I also understand there are times you just can't save a tree no matter what. That being said, I'm dismayed at the number of people who have made very ableist statements about trees and ADA requirements on accessibility or bus access. These are all, these are all obviously people who own cars who have never had to use mobility devices on old city infrastructure. Their suggestions of, oh, just move this over here, or how about no bus platforms at all, this is a neighborhood, or the like are disheartening, especially when they are perpetrated by city councilmember Dennis Robertson in his desire to save every tree no matter what cost, even if that means accessibility to people who live, study, work, or even just have to pass through Urbana. My suggestion is you all need to go borrow a chair and see how, what happens as just simple incline can make your life difficult. Trees are beautiful and does take a long time to get new ones to old-growth status, but if we never plant new ones because they don't provide the benefit of old ones, then how will we end up with old trees in the future when the ancient ones die, fall, get hit by lightning? It is commendable that the project is putting in something like 45-plus trees to help and add new future tree canopy to the street, to help add new future tree canopy to the street. While many of us will never see those as old-growth trees, our descendants will. It seems a lot of people can't see the forest for the trees, as the old saying goes." And I just had one show up here from Bob Lowboat. "I've been a resident of Urbana for seven years. I find the excessive violence toward Aleah Lewis by the police department unacceptable. I have three demands as a resident of Urbana. That the third-party investigation of the incident not be done by the state police in the interest of true accountability, total transparency, and maintaining trust within the community, that the charges against Lewis be dropped instead of drug court due to police use of excessive force and their refusal to use de-escalation tactics, that those board members who believe that the violence against Aleah pleads on the record state that a young 21-year-old woman deserves to be body slammed, punched, beat in the ribs, and then assault rifle her back for talking back at the police. If you do say this, hope that God may somehow save your soul." That's all the ones I have via email.
Thank you, Charlie.
Charlie, will, will all the people have an opportunity to speak at the time of the discussion when it comes up?
No, we're going to take public input right now.
Okay, I think some people were expecting to be able to talk at the time of the
Well, it's coming right after public input. It follows, so.
Yeah, we have two presentations coming up.
We do have two presentations. It's not an action item, it's a discussion item under the presentation, so we're going to go ahead and take public input due to the volume of public input. So I'll just go down the list. I see Christopher.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
Yes, it's Christopher Hansen, and I live in Urbana. I just wanted to issue my support for many of the statements that were read earlier about the Urbana Police Department and the Aleah Lewis arrest. I think Urbana residents are receiving a very low-quality product from the Urbana Police Department, especially given how much we're paying them, and we're paying them a lot, and I think Urbana residents deserve something much better. The process to improve the Urbana Police Department is completely broken, the civilian police review board, and I think the council is pretty well aware of that fact by now, but we really haven't heard them say anything about it. And to go along with that point, I don't think I've ever encountered an Urbana resident who actually thinks the civilian police review board is anything but a rubber stamp for the police department. There is no faith there, there's no trust in that system. And it's great that you're going to talk about CPRB reporting requirements next week, but that's only the tip of the iceberg. The CPRB needs to be fully reviewed by city council, and we need to clearly make some changes to the ordinance. And also, city council needs to be reviewing the actions of the peripheral city staff who have been denying citizen access to the complaint process, wrongfully so. I also want to mention, as I mentioned last week at the meeting, the city of Urbana is terrible when it comes to transparency. You guys need to stop talking about transparency until you've sat down and leafed through all of the Freedom of Information Act denials that are sent out by Charlie Smith and his cohort. You guys are not transparent, you deny as much as you can, especially in regards to the police department, and then you take it several steps further to denying and omitting records illegally. The city council needs to review the practices of city staff when it comes to FOIA requests. And also, as a reminder, you have not released all of the videos and records related to the Lewis arrest. You released just small portions that were selected by the police department. As someone else mentioned, I wanted to bring up the issue of Urbana Police having attempted to coerce a resident to remove his video of the Lewis arrest. The right to record police is protected by state law and also written clearly into Urbana Police Department policy. This needs to be investigated potentially as a crime. Also, we need to hear more commentary from the city council about the CPRB and the Lewis arrest incident. Previously, at one of the meetings, several city council members actually criticized citizens for not engaging in a dialogue, and then Mayor Marlin apparently went and arranged a secret meeting which was closed to the public, and since the council has basically ignored most public input. So we need to hear what you have to say. That's why you're getting dozens of people showing up every week trying to engage you in a dialogue that we are not really having. So let's hear some voices here. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Chong from Urbana. I just want city council to know that for all the talk about being a transparent government, the city and Urbana Police Department still have not released documents and the complete body camera footage for all officers in the Aleah Lewis case. I've been trying to get an explanation from city clerk Charlie Smith and Urbana Police Department FOIA officer Anthony Weck as to why only portions of the video footage selected by Chief Seraphin have been released. However, Charlie Smith and Tony Weck have been ignoring my emails. That is the opposite of transparency. I hope city council members can practice what they preach and see that the complete video footage for the Lewis case is released to the public. I also want to suggest to city council to take time to watch all the 2019 and 2020 CPRB meetings as you guys are preparing to discuss the CPRB. Don't worry, there are not that many meetings. I hope as you watch the videos, you will pay attention to issues such as how the board has made decisions to stop reviewing all taser displays, even though this is mandated by the ordinance. It was really quite alarming to hear some board members say that it's a waste of time to perform the reviews. And it was also very unprofessional of Deputy Chief of Police Richard Souls to complain at every meeting about the time it takes for him to select and redact the video footage. And in another occurrence, he even made excuses about missing, about some squad cam footage that was missing, and this was an incident where officers had tased a man twice. So I think you guys should actually sit down and watch all the videos. Look at how decisions are made, look at people discussing, look at who says what, look at what city staff says, and go from there. Thank you.
Laura Haber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Laura Haber, and I live on Green Street in Urbana, and I'd like to address the EMCOR project and tree removal. I spoke to the city last for the committee of the whole, and I wanted to update you that we currently have 823 signatures on the petition to the city to try to save whatever trees can be saved. And I understand that not everyone who has signed the petition knows all of the details about each tree and the health of each tree and viability. and the health of each tree and viability of them and the project. But what it does indicate is the extent of public concern about the canopy on Green Street and the desire to figure out some way to at least save some of the trees from removal. I'd like to say personally, I am in favor of accessibility and of the EMCOR project in general. One question that I have is to what extent was the City Council aware of the implications of EMCOR for the tree canopy in the Project Five, in the fifth phase of EMCOR? Was it entirely clear to the City Council when they accepted the grant money that it would have such an extensive impact on the tree canopy along Green Street and as a public corridor for the city? I'm also wondering, since one of the forestated goals of the project is to promote sustainability, I think there was a missed opportunity to talk to the Sustainability Advisory Commission and to get input about stormwater, drainage, and about sidewalks, and also about carbon sequestration that the mature trees provide and what the implications would be. And then importantly, I think that there was a missed opportunity to consult the Tree Commission. When I look at the city of Urbana website, it says that the Tree Commission is charged with providing advice and consultation to the city arborist on policies concerning selection, planting, maintenance, and removal of trees, plants, and shrubs. And then it goes on. And so I wonder why the Tree Commission was not consulted regarding removal of trees and planting of trees? Because it seems like this would be the charge of the Tree Commission. And I would request that the Tree Commission be given a role in examining each of the trees. I understand that there's a role for city staff expertise and expert expertise. And I think that independent commissions can kind of bridge the gap between public input and sentiment and city staff and provide that independent voice and perspective that would be really helpful. And then I'm also concerned about, and have questions about easements that were requested from private property owners. And I wonder how much of an easement was requested from property owners. I've been given the impression that perhaps city asked for five-feet easement, which maybe could have impacted why some property owners didn't give that easement.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Steve Waldb. I live in Urbana on Illinois Street. Been here 14 years. I'm also, I'd like to encourage the City Council to go the extra mile to preserve any, all, even one of the trees slated for removal in recognition of the, I think, really overwhelming public input that has been received to date. I think 823 signatures on an issue is a pretty astounding, strong public sentiment. There are some who think that public sentiment is late, a project that's been in the books for five years. And I would, I would just say that I don't agree it's late. There was a public comment period for this project dating back to 2015 and earlier. I think there were probably tens of people who provided public input at that time, although it was solicited. And I know that minimizing tree removal was part of that public record then. There's been more than five years for designers to carefully consider where sidewalks, ramps, bus stops, drainage, and excavation would occur for Phase Five. And if they were given direction to preserve Urbana's tree canopy to a maximum extent, I think it could have been done. And I don't think it was done, I don't think it was a priority. I know efforts were made, but I also know when you look at the list of trees to be removed, discretionary design elements are cited for the majority of the tree removals. Location of a sidewalk, location of a ramp, excavation into a root zone. And I know from other cities, for other trees, in other places and locations, engineers can preserve trees by designing projects around them. And again, I would just encourage creativity, flexibility, is recognize the public sentiment to preserve its trees. And you've gotten a lot of detailed analytical feedback. There are a list of trees that do not represent imminent hazards, do not represent irrevocable conflicts with other project design elements that are mandatory. It could be preserved, and I encourage you to do your job tonight and please get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Sarah.
Okay, before I begin my comment, I would like to state my objection to the citizen input being summarized today. I'm concerned about the slippery slope towards censoring and silencing.
Actually, Ms. Nixon, they weren't summarized. The clerk read the messages in their entirety.
Oh, thank you. So let me begin. This is Urbana resident Sarah Nixon. First, I viewed the record, the video record of last week's City Council meeting, and I want to commend those members of the council who are bravely continuing to stand up in support of the community's cry for accountability and appropriate disciplinary and remedial action in the assault, wrongful arrest, and jailing of Ms. Aleah Lewis by Urbana Police, as well as for the withdrawal of the wrongful criminal charges that were subsequently dredged up against Ms. Lewis by the state's attorney. Secondly, I want to repeat that the only ethical and appropriate course of action from local authorities moving forward is to A, drop all charges against Ms. Lewis, and B, issue a formal, full, and humble apology and compensation to her for the injuries and suffering caused her by the UPD. And thirdly, I call on the Urbana law enforcement leadership to take a giant step up to the same level of courage that is being evinced by those council members and to engage in the ugly wake of this embroilio in a difficult, yet very brave and very necessary collective conversation about how systemic racism and gender bias can be properly acknowledged, addressed, and eradicated once and for all in the Urbana Police Department. This conversation and process must necessarily involve transparency and humility on the part of the wrongdoers and a complete overhaul of the dysfunctional civilian police review board and a thorough outside investigation by professionals having expertise in policing that is truly and empirically racism-informed, trauma-informed, and gender-bias-informed. Lastly, we've heard some noises about the wrongful charges potentially being downgraded into quote-unquote "a drug court issue." Such a maneuver would constitute transparently nothing more than a subterfuge, a craven tactic to save face and evade responsibility, and an ugly insult on top of injury to Ms. Aleah Lewis. City Council members, thank you for hearing my concerns. My sincere hope is that genuine good can come of this horrible mess.
Thank you. Alan from CUDSA.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to make a small comment when it comes to recognizing how safety specifically relates to the tree canopy on Green Street. I completely recognize and hear the person with mobility constraints who basically felt that they weren't being thought of. And I wanted to emphasize that due to the increased temperatures expected with climate change, the tree canopy is a serious part of the discussion. So a proposal for the city to also consider is to at least do some analysis. We have a really nice university next door about the temperatures expected during summer over the next couple of years with the EMCOR corridor project. I'm hopeful that that was already part of it. But it's really important that when also improving our city's accessibility, that we aren't also creating an oven. Thank you.
Sharice, your hand is up, but this is for public input at this time. Did you realize your hand was raised?
Yeah, it's kind of public-related.
Well, this is not to respond to comments here, it's.
No, it's not to respond to anything. What I, I just wanted to know, well, maybe it's not the proper time, maybe, maybe I should wait till the end of the meeting. I just wanted to remind and also put information out there regarding everyone answering their census form as quickly as possible. Can I comment on that or no?
Can we put that under reports of officers, and you can do a public service announcement?
There we go, okay.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands raised. So we, Michael Tassin.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. Hi, my name is Michael Tassin. I'm a recent graduate of Urbana High School in the class of 2020. I actually recently received a letter from Mayor Marlin's office related to that, so thanks. So regardless, I've lived here, I've lived in Urbana for my whole life. I was born in Carl, and yeah, so I've heard a lot living here about, about how the government is run here, about like progressive values and humanness and sustainability and all these things. And I think what we're seeing happen recently is kind of a loss of that image, or it's starting to go away. People have talked about Aleah Lewis today and the case there. People have talked about the placement of cops in the Urbana school district, Urbana Middle and High School, which I have personal experience with, and I know that no student from either of those schools supports that or thinks it's going to be effective. And of course, the undue suffering in our community due to the coronavirus pandemic is always on our minds. But what I want to specifically talk about is the tree removal project on Green Street. So the stated goal of the project, which I heard about last meeting, is to more effectively balance the different modes of transportation. Obviously, that's commendable. Obviously, the accessibility aspects of it are very important, are essential to having, having an inclusive and just city. But I'm worried that the removal of shade trees will be counterproductive in that respect. That they'll disadvantage bikers and pedestrians, potentially to a dangerous extent, increasingly so as climate change escalates. If we're interested in walkability, sustainable urban development, and maintaining a humane image as a city and a city council, then the apparent haste with which these trees have been marked for removal without even a basic analysis, as far as I'm aware, the potential effects on the microclimates is concerning. So I would urge the council to consider doing an analysis of these effects. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the presentations scheduled for tonight. The first is a presentation from Fairgram, and it's the Vine and Main Street Intersection Analysis.
I'm just going to give a little introduction first.
Thank you, Carol Mitten, City Administrator.
Thank you. This is an analysis, this presentation is of an analysis that was prompted by a pedestrian fatality that occurred at the Main and Vine Streets intersection about a year ago. And it's taken longer to get to this point than we had hoped. But I just want to make sure everyone understands that we did not ask Fairgram to analyze the, anything regarding the accident per se, but we asked them to analyze the geometry of the intersection to see if there were any deficiencies in it that we needed to be aware of. And so that's, that's the, that's the focus of the analysis that they did. And tonight, we're joined by, by two gentlemen from Fairgram, Noah Carmichael and Roland White, and they will make the presentation of their, of their findings. So Roland, Noah, whoever wants to start.
Thank you, Carol, and thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, I'm here with my colleague Noah Carmichael, who's a senior transportation engineer with Fairgram. We're going to jump right into the presentation, see if I can get this screen shared correctly. There we go. Are you seeing my screen? No, okay, one more button looks like.
There we go, thank you.
As mentioned, we're going to discuss the Main and Vine intersection, the functionality of that intersection. Button situated here. The presentation outline for this evening is a, we're going to go over the scope of the study. We're going to discuss some intersection backgrounds, some, some history about the intersection. Summarize the standards that we use to review the intersection. We're going to review variances that we noted from those standards. And then we're going to have a brief discussion and recommend, and tell you some of our recommendations. The scope, as Carol alluded to, is to review the characteristics of the existing intersection, to review the existing intersection versus the currently utilized industry design standards, to identify variances based on those current standards, and also discuss some mitigating factors that may have come into play regarding that. And to, and to discuss our recommendations. Grounded as to where the intersection, the intersection of Main and Vine is on the sort of the northeast side of the downtown proper of the city of Urbana. It's the County Courthouse complex and the Schnucks Plaza sit-catty-cornered across the intersection, just so we're all clear on which intersection that we are talking about. So now we're going to do a little bit of a historical review. Thanks to the Champaign County GIS aerial photos, we are able to take a little walk down memory lane, get in our time machine, and look at some historic photos. And this is an aerial from 1973. We can see that the original design of the intersection typical in that, that vintage is focused on vehicular traffic. The, there's some obstructions at the corners of buildings that exist at that time. The northeast corner is undeveloped at that particular time, but you see sort of the squared-off nature of the corners, which is typical in older downtowns. And moving forward to 1988, we start to see some changes in the intersection. We see dedicated left turn lanes that were added on the eastbound, westbound Main Street. And we start to see the radiuses at the northeast and southeast corners start to get pulled back. Probably improvements that were made to accommodate turning vehicles such as trucks. Skipping forward to 2002, we see a dramatic change at the northeast corner where they pulled back the radius quite a ways, enlarging the intersection. And this was most likely due to truck traffic, due to industrial uses that were to the east of here at the time. And if you had any IDOT money involved in the project, they would have been pretty strict about making sure that if you had a semi-type vehicle, a design vehicle, that as it turned through this radius, it's had to stay in its lane, not only through the turn, but after it moved on to Vine Street, it would have to stay in its lane too. And that's what resulted most likely in this large radius you see. That increased the crosswalk distances on the north and the east leg. Would we do that today like that? Probably not, we'd look at some balancing needs of other modes of transportation. In 2005, we see some accessibility improvements at the, on. the on the north side of the intersection. We also see streetscape elements added to Vine Street and on the west side, or west side of Vine Street and on Main Street to the west of the intersection. Around this time, we start to also see these intersection bump outs being included around the downtown. When we take a parking lane, we shorten the distance across the intersection for pedestrians. So that's a good sort of human centered design feature there. 2008, so not much change from 2005 to 2008, but we do see the added development at the at the northeast corner of Starbucks. 2011, we start to see the implementation of the vision of the City of Urbana Bike Plan. We see bike lanes added at the east leg of the intersection. And this, the way that this is done is we have to reduce the travel lanes. If you look back, you see four vehicle lanes and that at this time, we've got two through vehicle lanes and that road has been repurposed for bicycle modality. And on the west leg of the intersection, dedicated right turn lane was added at this time. And the reason that is is was most likely due to matching up the lane configuration on either side of the intersection. In 2014, we go ahead and we carry this bike lane infrastructure through the through the intersection to the west side and along through through downtown. And so those are some very good improvements from your bike plan that were added to the intersection. But you kind of see, and this is typical with older intersections, the iterative nature of these changes over time. There's not much change as when we get to to 2017. And the one thing we noticed was the addition of accessible parking spaces at the courthouse. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Noah to talk about the standards that were used. Some of the variances were noted and some of our findings and recommendations.
Well, thank you, Roland. The standards used are pretty common for roadway projects. They're based on the basis is the I dot design standards, whether it be the Bureau of Local Roads Manual, the Bureau of Design and Environment Manual, and the various highway standard details provided by I dot. We also looked at what's known as ProWAG, which is a Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, which detailed the accessibility for all modes of transportation, specifically pedestrians and those with accessibility challenges. We also looked at the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, and that just dictates pavement markings and and the like. We identified a number of variances, as you can see here in this chart. The best way to look at these, though, is from an aerial photo. So I'll go have Roland go ahead and flip to the next slide. And you will see that, you know, this is a typical intersection. It was developed over decades, perhaps even centuries. And this is standard in developed, older, urbanized areas of town where vehicle sizes change, vehicle demands change. And just over time, the intersection that you're left with generally have a handful of variances. And this may be taper length, storage lengths, some, you know, lane width restrictions, which we didn't find in this case on this intersection. But this is a very typical intersection where there's a handful of variances induced simply to the fact that it just was an iterative design process over many, many years. There's also a number of mitigating factors which caused those variances. And again, we'll we'll skip through this text slide and it's easier to see on the aerial photo. So on the aerial photo, we talk about the taper and the storage lengths. And oftentimes, that is one item that the design engineer must balance when we're talking about putting a roadway in a developed area. The taper lengths and the storage length is highlighted there on on the map. Those are dictated by the close intersection of Urbana Avenue and the entrance into the Schnucks Development. You only have a certain amount of time, so you have to balance the left-hand turning movements from Main onto Vine, as well as from Main into the development. And from a design perspective, you just have to do the best you can. When I look at this, I don't see any design elements that we would do differently today when we look at Main Street there. A similar situation exists that East Elm and Vine, with that intersection, were limited on the taper length and the storage that can be provided for those making the left-hand turn from Vine onto East Main Street. So these are variances from the design standards, but ones that we would probably repeat today. There's also the large turning radius, as Roland had mentioned, on the northeast corner. While technically it's not a variance, we would probably design that slightly different today simply due to the fact that we would incorporate the the many modes of transportation and try to balance out those things. When this was designed, odds are all that the design engineer looked at was the fact of let's get this traffic moving through this intersection as efficiently as possible. We also noticed a handful of things as far as slight deficiencies in the ADA ramps for the pedestrians at the corners. Anybody that's been around transportation for the past 15 or 20 years know that those standards are constantly evolving and improving. So it it really isn't surprising that there's some slight deficiencies when we talk about cross slope and landing areas and such when we look at those ramps. Again, it's very common in intersections that develop over time. Another item that we noticed was the site visibility for right turns. Roland has this archived photo from 1973. And you can see the presence of the building on the northwest corner and the signage on the southeast corner. And so any cars approaching the intersection on Main Street from either the west or the east, when they stop to make the right-hand turn, they're looking at a sign or they've got a building that potentially blocks their view. So that's one item that we noticed is not up to current design standards. The good part is this type of situation rarely occurs in newly developed areas because modern zoning laws and setbacks and site distance and all those things are incorporated when they're when building plans and site development plans are reviewed by the local agency. So this is one of those things that unfortunately has been in existence for years and years and years, and it's just one of those things that we must design around. So on to our conclusions and recommendations. First and foremost, the observations. Hopefully, everyone can take away that the intersection as it's designed today has what we consider an average degree of variances. We also looked at the SUEAT or the the COAT safety list, and this intersection is not listed as a high priority on that list. In just knowing the City of Urbana, we believe the city likely has higher priority intersections in need of an upgrade well in advance of this intersection. Most of the variances that we uncovered could easily be corrected during the next intersection upgrade or maintenance to that intersection. I believe that that intersection has gone through a recent modification, so it might be 15 to 20 years in the future. The minor ADA variances that we noticed can be prioritized and incorporated into the city's ADA transition plan. Urbana is no different than most other communities that the list of ADA improvements is nearly endless. And I would think that there would be higher priority places within the city that those funds could be used. If the site visibility issues, as we had just discussed, causes concern, the city could decide to implement a no turn on red at that intersection. Obviously, that would take some some review and some discussion as there's pros and cons to doing that. Our recommendations at this point, we do not believe that there are any improvements that what we would consider emergency or or needed at this time. We do advise the City of Urbana to double-check the signal timing for pedestrian movements as well as for the the traffic and to make sure that it is up to up to the latest standards. We recommend that you address the ADA issues with the next resurfacing project at the intersection. And one item that we did come up with is just a potential would be to study the option of constructing a refuge island in the northeast quadrant of that intersection. We typically don't recommend those islands on a regular basis. We like to study those and make sure that they're the right thing to do. Anytime we put an obstruction in the middle of traffic, we want to make sure that it is the best design. So those are our recommendations from our review of the intersection. And we would entertain any questions if there's time for that this evening.
Sure. I would just add real quick, I'd like to throw a thank you out to city staff, to Carol and Justin Shannon for providing direction to us and providing information that we needed.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Bill Brown, do you have your hand raised?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that. That was a good analysis. On the the option for the refuge island, another way to solve that crossing distance problem would be to shorten both radiuses. So would you recommend the island over shortening the radius radiuses, radii?
Those are those are both design options to be considered. At this point, I haven't looked at it close enough to say one versus the other, but either of those two would accomplish kind of the same goal.
Because I think when the Schnucks first went in is when that radius on the northwest northeast corner really got long was because they still had two through traffic lanes, plus they had a left turn, dedicated left turn, dedicated right turn. So we took out one of those lanes and made it into a bike lane. So you really don't need that full width anymore. It would be nice, I would think, to shorten that radius and and make it a more normal corner. And same thing on the southeast corner. There's extra space in the road now that's not being used that you could lengthen that lengthen the curve and shorten that radius, I guess is what you'd call it.
Yeah, I think the the traffic island, refuge island option was was suggested because it is potentially a lower cost alternative. I think a better solution is probably what you mentioned is to is to bring the radius, return it back to how it was historically. But it's also very expensive. The traffic signal equipment would have to be moved, et cetera. And so that would be something that has to be considered.
Okay. And then for the site distances, wouldn't one solution be to reduce the speed limit from 35 to 30? How much difference would that make as far as the required site distance?
So are you referring to the speed limit on Vine?
On Vine Street, yeah. So I think it's already 30 on Main Street.
Okay. But it certainly could be looked at because it is an element of the reaction time for that vehicle that's turning right as to how fast the vehicle is coming coming.
Yeah, that that may help a little bit. We we calculated the required site distance to be just shy of 400 feet. And currently, there's about 150 feet of site distance there. So while the the reduced speed limit may help, I don't think it's going to be enough to overcome the gap where we could then say it meets the design requirements.
Okay. Yeah, I don't remember if, I know at some point in the past few years, we removed the right turn on red on some streets on downtown. I don't remember if that was one of them. Maybe that's something we should look at again. And then you did have a nice example of a simple protected intersection in the report that you gave to council that had like one lane in each direction. Did you try to mark up anything what that would look like in in our realistic intersection with multiple lanes going all directions?
We didn't. We didn't take it quite that far. We we provided that more of an example and something to consider in the future, but it, to be honest, we just assessed the current situation and didn't quite take it to that next step. Obviously, that's something that can be done should the city decide to advance us further.
And would it be safe to be to assume that that would be even more expensive than shortening the two radii?
Well, I don't know about that, but in any in any case, you'd have to do a intersection design study to look at all the geometrics and and make always make sure we, you know, kind of the first rule of thumb is do no harm. So we want to fully vet the concept that we're not causing a problem that's worse than what we're we're trying to solve. But the protection intersection concept is, you know, it's worth looking at.
Okay. And then just one final question. And when you did the analysis for the storage and tapering, it it looks like it's really short, and I agree, there's really not many other choices. But did you actually have data on on turn volumes or did you estimate turn volumes based on regular street traffic data that I dot provides?
No, my recollection is we we he actually, we looked at recent traffic volumes, we took traffic counts and the speed of the intersection. And there's various charts and formulas in the I dot standard that that sort of produce those storage and taper lengths.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Roberts and then Jared Miller.
Yeah, hello. Thanks for your report. I was sort of wondering what we would be seeing tonight about recommendations. And I guess it's not really recommendation going forward. You're just basically analyzing whether there's a problem. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not really making a recommendation for improvement in particular?
Well, I think if we if we would have seen something that really jumped out at us as this, this is totally unlike any other intersection, it's a big problem, would have made a recommendation to fix that, you know. But I don't think we we saw those.
Yeah, one of one of the challenges, it seems, I I walk through this intersection fairly often. I I live south of a Main Street and I walk across, I go to Schnucks. I'm not always at this intersection. I use a crosswalk that was installed just east on Main Street of the area that you referred to. I guess you remember that crosswalk that's marked with stripes? That was installed because it was so difficult to cross the width of the Main Street near where behind the Schnucks Plaza, where basically there is service parking and semi delivery space or the shops that are in the southern part of the Schnucks Plaza area. So there are semis that have been turning in and out of the that back the back delivery area. And there was reconfiguration there because people also in my neighborhood often walk to Schnucks. And there's probably always been people walking across that section. So one of my, I guess, was the pedestrian traffic that's pretty often making that crosswalk journey one of the aspects that you wondered about or considered in the safety analysis that you're providing for us right now?
Other than looking at the standards of of like the pedestrian clearance timing for this length of an intersection versus the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control requirements, we didn't do a sort of a global pedestrian analysis. That was not part of our scope.
I see. That that crossing is only a block and a quarter away from the intersection we're looking at. So pedestrian use there, I think, is important to be aware of. And even with the crosswalk, you know, there have been times when I've had to run out of the way of a car, which is not paying attention, which, you know, might have resulted in me or my partner being hit due to people speeding up after they leave the intersection. So I just want to make that comment as far as a safety element. My other question for you was traffic that's entering the intersection from the north is coming up out of the underpass far just a little bit north of that. It's and as the people come out of the underpass and they're approaching the intersection, there was some concern about visibility as you approach the traffic light. Some people try to beat the light coming up that because the traffic comes up pretty fast up the grade to the intersection. And I was wondering if you felt that there was any condition related to traffic coming from the below the Vado. traffic coming from the, below the vaudeville up to the intersection in a very short distance as an aspect of the traffic flow that you're wondering about or really considering tonight?
You know, we didn't note a uh visibility issue per the standards, but certainly something we could take a deeper look into if, if you and the, and the city staff would like us to.
So the um, what's, what is the speed limit on Vine Street? Through the intersection, are you aware of that?
My understanding is it's thirty-five?
Yeah, it might be, it might be something for the city to comprehend uh dropping it to thirty until we reach University Avenue. I think that would mitigate a few of the instances that are a concern for me. And uh we've done that in other streets, including Lincoln and also Main Street. So I think we were, I think it might be, you can't really go too fast between Illinois Street and this intersection to get anywhere in town. And there's no need to be trying to get up to thirty-five miles an hour.
Sure.
Okay, those are my comments. Thanks for your uh input and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Jared?
Uh Roland Noah, thank you for uh your presentation this evening. Uh I had some questions, but Bill actually asked most of the questions I was going to ask, but I did have one uh question for Carol and Justin about uh whether or not we hold a report or annual analysis on uh dangerous intersections in the city. And, you know, hearing uh Noah and Roland discuss that this is probably not uh a most dangerous intersection, but certainly one with the uh most publicized depth in recent memory uh with a pedestrian being struck. Uh I just thought, well, what are the more dangerous ones? That was immediately where my brain went. So I was just curious, uh Carol, if we produce that yearly or on any regular basis? If we have uh somewhere where that information is kept that we are tracking ourselves?
I, I think, um, I think RPC actually is the keeper of the list. Um Justin can probably tell us better.
Yeah, so COATs is the keeper of the, the list of um, of the intersections within the um Champaign-Urbana area that are considered um a higher safety risk. Uh so there are intersections in the city of Urbana that fall on that list. However, most of those intersections actually fall under um areas that we have plans to do studies or improvements on already. Uh so, so we're definitely aware of those and, and planning to address them in the future.
Because I, I imagine that most of them are related to University Avenue where we only have very little say in what we do with the designs of what happens there because it's a, a state road. Uh so when I think about what, you know, dangerous and where we level our uh and exert our control over what we can do with the intersections in the city of Urbana, I think of places like Vine and Main where it's all our road and it isn't anybody else's road and we're really in control of that design. So, you know, even though other intersections may warrant it, if we don't really have the power to affect what happens on them, I think that's just something we all, we need to consider as a factor in our decision-making as well.
What, what I would offer, and I'm, this is, this is very timely. Um next week, we're going to get, begin the conversation around the um capital improvement program. And um Justin and I will remind each other to um have that list um handy and, and so we can weave that into the discussion of the different projects that we're um suggesting we should prioritize, just so everybody has that same background.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Ellis?
Thank you very much for the analysis in the background. It was uh really interesting to see the aerial photographs of how that intersection has changed over time. Um based on your recommendations, which I believe are uh, just to summarize quickly, you're not recommending anything immediately change. What you're recommending is that the next iteration of working on that intersection that certain things are upgraded. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so other than um the increase in ADA uh accessibility of those ramps and potentially uh changing the curb cut or having the pedestrian refuge area, I'm wondering, Diane, if you and the staff had had an opportunity to think about, are there any immediate plans to do anything in this intersection? Or is this something that's going to be evaluated in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years?
It would have to be considered as part of our overall capital improvement plan. So not in the immediate future, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Roland or Noah? Oh, Bill Brown?
Yeah, I just, I thought of one more. Uh I'm not real familiar with these um sort of painted, painted on curb extensions. Do you know what I'm talking about? Um and do you have any feeling or uh impression of how, how uh, how, how effective they are?
But it, it could be something to look at. It's where, where you do basically a lane drop and instead of um actually moving the curb, you're painting a neutral zone, uh telling cars not to go there to, is that what you're talking about, Bill?
Yeah, or other, or other kind of soft improvements that aren't expensive. I don't know if there's uh other uh, other ways you can extend the curb without actually rebuilding the curb. Um and the paint, I mean, I guess at least on the southeast side, we basically already have the paint there. But that doesn't really help the pedestrian. But if you had a planter there or something or had some other way to protect, protect the pedestrians so that they could come out farther, then I guess you'd need the button out there. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud. If you, if you think of anything like that, that wouldn't be expensive and uh, and that could be effective, I think we'd be interested in looking at it.
I know in uh, in Florida, you see a lot of delineators, flexible delineators when they do lane reductions, but, but those don't work great within, in snowplow country. So, but yeah, there, you're, it's a good point. There's other, other methods that we might want to look at down the road.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any last comments or questions? All right, thank you very much, Roland and Noah.
Thank you.
Okay, the other presentation we have, which is an update on and discussion on the um Green Street and Core project. Carol, do you want to lead off or someone else?
No, I will lead off, thank you. Um so I would like to start again this evening by, with a few thank yous. Um and I want to begin by thanking staff, um the engineering folks, the city arborists and other staff who helped negotiate the easements. I want to thank our partners, including MTD, who secured the fifteen point seven million dollar Tiger grant that is funding this project. And our consultants, including um our main um engineer from Hanson, Cindy Los, for all their hard work. MCore is first and foremost a transportation project. The project will deliver a new roadway, enhanced bus accessibility, bike lanes and ADA accessible sidewalks. These improvements are the priority for MCore and the city accepted that when we agreed to participate in this project. Throughout this project, we've tried to achieve a balance among competing interests and compromises have been made. For example, on-street parking had to be removed in order to accommodate the bike lanes without widening the street. Some of the infrastructure improvements were shifted from their preferred locations to try and minimize tree removal. And some mature trees will be removed in order to deliver the transportation priorities inherent to this project. All of the trees in public space along Green Street are likely to be impacted by the MCore construction to some degree because their root systems may be impacted. The nineteen trees targeted for removal, two-thirds of which have risk hazard ratings of seven or higher, will be especially impacted by the construction. For the trees in the second phase of construction, and that would be those west of McCullough Street, we promised to revisit those nine trees and consider whether any of them could be retained during construction despite the more serious impact that construction will have on these trees. Our recommendation continues to be that these trees be removed. We will do an even deeper dive into each of the nine trees than we did last week in just a minute. But I wanted to share with you that I spoke with the city attorney and he opined that if we leave trees in place that we believe are compromised and worse still, that we caused them to be compromised, then the city is taking on additional liability should someone be hurt by a falling limb. Before we turn our attention to the specifics of the nine trees in Phase Two, I want to clear up some misconceptions that are circulating out in the community about the MCore tree removals. First, the impression has been given that there was a formal role for the Tree Commission in the selection of trees for removal along Green Street. That is false. Among the roles granted to the Tree Commission by our ordinance is to be an arbiter of disputes over decisions made by the city arborists. The city arborist served in a consulting capacity for this project, kind of like an in-house expert. And as I mentioned last week, there was extensive consultation between Mike Brunk, our former city arborist, and Craig Schonkweiler, our former assistant city engineer. Adjustments to the project were made based on this consultation, but the final decisions rested with the engineering team. The engineers are responsible for delivering the transportation facilities that we committed to back in twenty fifteen. I would like to add, though, that Carol Augsberger, Chair of the Tree Commission, has requested some additional consultation with Kevin and me on the species selected for tree replacement. And I told her that we'd be happy to do that. The Tree Commission does have a role in advising us about the trees that we plant. Second, the impression has been given that there was a role for the Sustainability Advisory Commission in the selection of trees for removal along Green Street. That is false. There is no role for the S A C in this matter. If there was, it might be to comment on the overall sustainability picture, including the loss of nineteen mature trees and the addition of forty-seven younger replacement trees, as well as the enhanced mobility from this project so that more people can walk, bike and take the bus rather than drive cars. Finally, the impression has been given that tree removal as a part of this project has just been sprung on people. That is a misleading impression. As Bill Brown noticed, noted last week, there was an open house for Phase Five in September twenty fifteen, at which time an exhibit was shared showing the trees then proposed for removal in Phase Five. That is still posted on the project website. At that time, there were seventeen trees to be removed. And if we had changed all of the easements we tried to get, the current total of removals would also be seventeen. Of the original locations shown, twelve of the seventeen locations are on our current list. While there have been some adjustments made and the actual trees to be removed, no one should be surprised that trees would be removed with the MCore project. And I would add that most of the comments and the change.org petition are not focused on specific trees, but all quote unquote healthy trees slated for removal. For anyone who is this fervent about tree removal, there have been numerous opportunities over the past four-plus years to share concerns. Public comment is a part of each and every council meeting. Council members or members of the public could have raised the subject when the council acted on various decision points for the project. And each of those decision points allowed the project to move closer to construction. And most recently, someone could have raised the issue of tree removal just last month when the council approved the budget amendment to pay for Phase Five so we could put it out for bid. No one did. So now with Justin's help, I will walk you through the additional information we've gathered about the nine trees west of McCullough Street that are included in this project. Please note as um, as we go through here, and I'll try to remember to call it out as we go, um that Kevin Sanderson updated the risk hazard ratings for each of these trees from the twenty thirteen information that we had last week. And um, and that's included on the chart that I had um sent you all over the weekend. I sent you a revised chart um this morning. And then Charlie posted that on the website for, for everyone. And so um Justin, if, do you have the, the chart to pull, that we could pull up? And then Justin also has some cross-sections to share and some photos. So Justin's going to share his screen in just a second.
Yeah, one second. Sorry about the delay there. Can you see that?
That, that's great, thanks. Okay, so um trees number one and two are within the footprint of, of the enhanced bus stop that will be located at, at the um northwest corner of uh Green and Bucy. And we actually did have a, a little um co- uh conversation with the folks at MTD. Um and, and just because we wanted to have a holistic conversation and also everybody helped refresh each other's memory about how certain decisions had been made in the past. So trees number one and two are um, they're, they are a result of, of a, of a shift that was made. Um the original design, which was the preferred design um by MTD, was that the, that the um bus stop be located at the northeast corner of Green and Bucy and not the northwest corner of Green and Bucy. And they call that a nearside stop, which is something I'm going to put in the memory bank because it sounds like I know more than I do. Um but that would have led to the removal of healthier trees. And so the compromise was made to move um, to move the stop uh to the northwest corner. And that is impacting um the two sugar maples that are trees number one and two. Now, I would note that um Kevin updated the hazard rating for each of these trees and the hazard rating for tree number one is now a seven and the hazard rating for tree number two is now an eight. And as um I think we noted last week, um trees are eligible for removal if they're rated seven or above. Now, tree number three is um a non-native Siberian elm. And um it has a ma- as we noted last week, it has a major lean over the street. The hazard rating is unchanged, it's still a six. But the decision was made to remove this tree because, because of the lean, it was, it's more susceptible to disease because of the species. But also it's competing with a much better species that's on private property and that's a buckeye. So that was the decision there. Um tree number four is a um, it has an updated hazard rating of seven and deadwood was pruned out of it um about five years ago. Um it's not considered to be in particularly good condition and it's located at a corner where we're ramping down to accommodate the ADA ramp. So the amount of excavation is going to be um increased there. Uh tree number five, that tree, and I believe that um, we'll, we'll, we'll do the cross-sections in a minute. I'm just going to walk through this all, Justin, but that's the first one we have a cross-section for, I believe, right?
Yes.
Number five, okay. So in that case, the tree is very close to the sidewalk and we're hoping that once you see the cross-section, you'll understand why construction is problematic with some of these trees because it will, it will, um, the excavation will significantly impact the um, the roots there. So this is also a declining tree and it has an updated hazard rating of seven. Tree number six, which has been a focus of attention and um it was, it was listed in terms of the reasons for removal that in part it was tree condition and part is about the bus stop and ADA accessibility. But it, it, it's still has a, a updated hazard ra- hazard rating of a six. But what I want, and we had this conversation with the folks at MTD, this is not really being, um, the, the cause of us wanting to remove this tree is really not the bus stop. It's that it is, it is um near the corner and so we have the It's that it is near the corner, and so we have this downslope of the of the, well, I believe the elevation of the sidewalk is changing. And then we have the downslope associated with the ADA ramp. So in light of the fact that we thought the tree should be removed, we moved the bus stop into a better location. Could the bus stop be moved? Yes. Would it change our conclusion and recommendation? No. So people have focused on moving the bus stop. And we hope through the cross-section that we show you that you'll understand better why that's actually not germane to the discussion. Then tree number seven, that's another one where it's very close to the sidewalk and we're going to have to excavate into it. That one retains a risk hazard rating of six, or actually that one hadn't been rated. But it's not in particularly good shape. Tree number eight, that is another one that's right on top of the sidewalk. I believe we have a cross-section for eight. That one is a declining tree, and it has an updated hazard rating of eight. And then the last tree, tree number nine, has an updated hazard rating of six. So that was unchanged. But this is another one that's located at a corner where the ramps are coming into play. So now I'm going to ask Justin to show you, we have selected trees, I believe we have five and six and eight and nine, if I remember correctly, to show you the cross-sections to hopefully illustrate better for you so you can understand what, when we say impacted by construction, you'll understand better what we mean. So go ahead, Justin.
All right, so this is tree number five. I guess I don't have the addresses in front of me. This would be in front of 609 West Green Street on the south side of the road. So this would be looking towards the east. And what we'll see
Yeah, you're sharing your screen, Justin.
You still have the chart up there.
Is it? Oh. Let me try this again. Can you see this now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sorry about that. So this is a cross-section view looking towards the east. This tree's on the south side of Green Street in front of 609 Green. One thing to note here, and it might show up in the picture on the next slide, is that there's actually a brick fence, kind of an accent fence on the other side of the sidewalk here. So there was not a consideration for an easement to bump the sidewalk out due to the decorative fence, but also then the amount of excavation, we'll see this on all of these cross-sections. The amount of excavation necessary on the street side in most cases is about two feet. Then the sidewalk in most of these locations also, or all these locations is going to be lowered as well. So here we're showing that number six inch cut at the tree. That's the elevation change of the ground level at this cross-section at this point on the street. So that alone is, I mean, that's getting into the shallow root system and the roots around the trunk of the tree. So again, this is tree number five. The left is a picture of the wound that's mentioned in the trunk. So you can see the vertical, the lighter part there in the middle is where there's a significant loss of bark. And then on the right, we can see just how close that tree is to the sidewalk. So imagine dropping the whole profile here about six inches and the damage that can be had on the sidewalk or to the tree because of that excavation.
Justin, are you asking that, are you saying that the sidewalk will be lower than we see it today? The sidewalk itself will be lower?
Uh, yes.
So Justin, can you also describe the amount of excavation associated with just the depth of the sidewalk itself between, to accommodate the concrete and the gravel?
Yeah, and so that's not quite shown here on the right, though. So where we have the sidewalk, and actually I misspoke, the sidewalk will be at the same elevation. What's required is that to remove that sidewalk and then excavate a further six inches to accommodate the new subgrade for the sidewalk and then to replace the top soil at that location. So at this location, the sidewalk itself isn't coming down. But in order to excavate for that sidewalk, or to place that new sidewalk, we have to excavate down twelve inches into the existing soil.
Can you just point, let's go back for a second on the cross-section. Just make sure everybody understands where's the sidewalk, where's the street?
Okay, yeah, so the sidewalk is shown here on the right side, ending right here. And then this would be the parkway, what's grass now where the tree is. And then here we show the curb and gutter on the side of the street. This section is the subgrade or the subbase for the pavement. So this would be the rock, this would be the concrete. Below that rock, in some areas, we have to excavate even further due to the soil conditions of the existing soil. And then also along each side of the street, below the gutter, we're installing under drains. So that's a drainage system specifically for the pavement to help drain the soils underneath the pavement. So that's why we get into such depths and why this notch even here is shown a little bit lower is to install that whole pavement system. It's not, we're not just putting new concrete back, we're putting new concrete on top of new rock. And in a lot of areas, that new rock is going on top of replacement soil as well.
Can I ask a question about the drainage?
Sure.
So you're saying that you're putting in a new drainage system. And is the drainage going to drain vertically down into the ground below the pavement that you're going to be replacing? Or is the drainage going to be flowing along the curb at a certain level below grade?
So the
Horizontal drainage or is it a vertical drainage down into the earth?
It's a horizontal drainage. So the pipe itself will be in this lower section of the soil. And it's draining the soil. It's a perforated plastic pipe that is draining the soil. And that water then flows horizontally into a storm sewer.
I see. So that's not undercutting the cement of the structure of the roadway itself by doing the draining of soil away from the bottom of the pavement?
The intention for that is to, yeah, to keep the soil below the pavement dry so that the effect of the freeze thaw is less on the new pavement in the winter.
Okay.
And to help with early settlement. So that's tree number five. Tree number six, this is the tree at the at 601 West Green, where the proposed bus stop will be located. So here we can see a significant grade change. This is due to, if you go out and look, and I try to capture in the pictures that will show, there's a significant grade change or elevation change from this location to the intersection at Orchard. So you know, here, regardless of the bus stop being at that location, the sidewalk needs to be lower so that we have, we're meeting the accessibility guidelines just to get to this point on the sidewalk. So that, you know, that tree has a shallow root system. That'll show up in the picture here next. And then again, we're cutting, you know, that underdrain depth for the new soil or the new pavement. And at the tree location, the excavation depth is going to be fifteen inches. And so here, on the left, we can see the really shallow root system and all those roots that are, you know, will easily be damaged by the excavation that's necessary to meet the accessibility requirements for the sidewalk. And then on the right, you can get a sense of just how much higher the tree and the base of the tree and the parkway is than the intersection or than the street pavement. So much so that there's actually a step in front of this house to get down from the carriage walk, the private sidewalk onto the street.
So Justin, does that mean that if the tree's removed, the soil from the sidewalk edge to the will be slanted and lowered? So that there'll be a kind of a ramp then leading to the edge of the curb where the bus stop, where the person would get on the bus?
Yeah, so that's shown here, this is the new, the bus stop. So it'll be pavement from the edge. And this actually will include a curb-like structure or small wall between the existing yard and
So there'll be a retaining wall there.
Right, so there'd be a small retaining wall as part of that sidewalk. And then this is the sidewalk or the bus stop pavement or pad.
So the, so the, there'll be quite a bit of excavation across somebody's yard to maintain this lower sidewalk level than as one approaches this corner, is that correct?
Anywhere we're doing excavation on private property where we did not obtain a permanent easement, we have obtained temporary easements. So some grading of private property may need to be done, but we've obtained temporary construction easements to accommodate that.
It is the drop from where we are as far as the surface to the new surface, is that the fifteen inches? Or is that twelve foot?
You mean this elevation here?
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm not sure that number, or I'm not sure of that number. Based on the hatching there, it looks like it would be, yeah, right about a foot. From the top of the wall there to the
So the retaining wall may extend across the person's front of their property somewhat to allow for that repositioning of the sidewalk. It's right now the sidewalk's too high, this corner, is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So again, the picture is for tree number six. You can also see how close that tree and the root system is to the sidewalk. Tree number seven, this is in front of the property at 508 West Green. It's a, the property itself is a parking lot. So there's a, there's kind of a hump here where the tree itself is. And the tree, as we'll see in the picture, actually sits, the base of the tree sits higher than the existing sidewalk. So in this case, the sidewalk itself is not being lowered. But again, the twelve inches of excavation on the left side here in the cross-section in combination with the two-foot excavation on the street side for the new pavement, the underdrain. And then lowering the parkway is going to do significant damage to that tree's root system.
And what's the necessity for not leaving the bump as it is? If you're not changing the position of the sidewalk and the current slope where the tree is sitting is almost satisfactory for the edge of the curb, why would you want to scrape away the bump? I mean, what purpose is that?
Well, we show the bump going away here because we showed the tree going away.
Well, that's one of the questions that people have. I mean, if the tree was left alone and you didn't try to scrape the bump down, I mean, you could still have the sidewalk where it is.
Well, the
You could let the curb where it is.
The reason for removing the tree isn't to take the bump down. It's because of the damage that's going to be caused to the tree's root systems by the excavation on either side of the tree for the sidewalk and the street pavement. But you know, it's worth noting, and we'll show here on the pictures, that the tree, the base of the tree itself, and you know, the roots as they start to flare out, actually sit higher than the existing sidewalk. So for the sidewalk to go back in its current place, and actually on the right side, you can see the roots starting to actually encroach on top of the sidewalk. In order to replace that sidewalk and the street, it's going to do significant damage to that root system. So that's one where it, even, you know, a sidewalk bump out, things like that wouldn't accommodate the tree because of its, just where, how high it sits currently and the damage that's going to be caused.
Did the Presbyterian Church people comment about whether they would be willing to make an easement that allowed the sidewalk to curve around the tree's base?
They weren't approached about that easement because, like I said, the bump out wouldn't preserve the tree because of the excavation needed for the street. And the damage that's going to be caused to the root system on the south side of the tree, on the street side.
Well, it looks like the roots are more exposed on the north side.
Just interject, I think that wasn't a high priority, you know, from historically. I mean, going back to Mike Brunk's notes, number seven was noted as a tree that was not in good shape. So I don't think that was prioritized for trying to get an easement in the first place.
Okay. So we'll move on to tree number nine then. This is at the corner, the southwest corner of the intersection of Green Street and McCullough. This tree, so it sits just south of the sidewalk ramp that we'll see as it crosses Green Street. So again, here, there's a significant elevation change for the sidewalk. And that's true for both the Green Street side. This is looking at the, this is looking down McCullough towards the north. So there's significant elevation change for the sidewalk. And then again, less excavation depth here.
Chart for color parts to it.
The combination of elevation change and the excavation depth here, you mean that this tree that's already somewhat unhealthy is going to be put at greater risk of failing?
So I think that's all we had, right? Or did you, oh, did you have pictures of number nine that you wanted to show?
Yeah, so, and the brick sidewalk on McCullough, brick sidewalks even more susceptible than concrete sidewalk to buckling and moving with tree roots. And again, that tree's just so close to the sidewalk on both parts of the sidewalk there that the elevation change is going to do significant damage to the root system.
So I think that's all, that's all we had to present.
Can you remind me, Carol, our representatives from the Mass Transit District here?
I think Jay is on, let me see, I know he was earlier, let me see. Jay Rank is on, I don't know if there's anyone else, but
He's an engineer with the Mass Transit District?
Yes.
Okay, so if there are questions related to things from the MTD's standpoint, then he'll be available for answering. I see a hand up, Mary Alice, you have questions?
Do, um, so I want to thank staff for going through these, reevaluating them. I also want to thank the public, I really enjoyed some of the pictures that people sent. I think Dan's daughter gave a thumbs up or thumbs down. It was nice to see the different pictures there. I think Dennis also went out and took a lot of pictures. But I've given some thought to these types of trees. And when is a good time that we should be cutting trees? And when is a time that we should be preserving trees? In order to be consistent with how we evaluate trees across the city, we slate for removal if the city, if the condition, a hazard condition is seven or higher. So if I look at this new rating that we received, I guess this weekend, a lot of these trees are at that rating of seven, right? So we have one, two, three, four. We have four trees that are in that rating of seven. So regardless of if M-Cor is happening or not, it could be possible that these trees would be slated for removal just as an overall picture of how we manage our trees. So that's number one. Number two, I understand the complexities of trying to figure out the best location and the types of requirements for the MTD bus stops. So I'm not really concerned about, I don't like the fact that we have to remove trees in order to do that, but I understand the reasons why we have to do it. And third, the ADA requirements in terms of the sidewalks and so forth are something that we need to take seriously. So I don't really have a problem with trees that fit the criteria for us to allow for better accessibility. So that brings me to all the trees that don't meet those things, okay? So any tree that is six or less in the hazard rating, any tree that is not part of the creation of the bus stop, and any tree and um any tree that's not going to interfere with the ADA compliance in the curb cutout on the sidewalk. Um, so I listed a couple of trees and I think I just wanna confirm because I heard from Justin today, some of the reasons why some of those trees that don't fit that criteria um have been recommended for removal and that would be, let me see here. I think tree six is one of the ones that you talked about, the elevation change and tree nine, is it tree six or nine, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or I've got split screens trying to scroll through my spreadsheet here. Um, so just to reiterate, in order for those, in order in order for the project and the um what needs to happen with the sidewalk, what I'm hearing you say is that elevation is gonna be lowered, so more of those roots will be exposed, regardless of what happens in construction, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so if more of those roots are going to be exposed and the roots are gonna be basically cut where you have to dig down, then you're really uh marginalizing the potential life of that tree, is is that the basic synopsis there?
Yes.
Okay, um, and then that leaves me with, let's see here, can I make this bigger? That leaves me with um tree three and potentially tree seven, if I'm looking at that correctly, so tree three, did you have a picture of tree three?
I did not, no. Uh, tree three is the one that's leaning, it's a Siberian elm that's leaning heavily over the street away from a a much healthier Buckeye tree.
So when we typically look at trees that are perhaps leaning uh over the street, how do we how do we account for that in terms of hazard rating?
Uh, I think Kevin Sanderson might be, uh, I think he's called into this, so Kevin, if you are on uh and could talk a little bit maybe about the the tree hazard ratings?
Yeah, Justin, this is Kevin, um, the hazard rating for leaning trees is, um, if it's got less than over a forty-five degree angle becomes a hazard automatically just because the root system come compromised on the opposite sides basically holding it and that's the area they'll be cutting the roots for the excavation of the sidewalk.
I I'm sorry, so you said that if a tree is at a forty-five golden, it's considered a hazard and then I would assume that your hazard rating would be a seven or higher?
Yes.
Okay, so this in this case, this tree is leaning, the hazard rating is six, so what is the difference between including the leaning of a tree into the hazard rating and the fact that this one is a six?
That one probably could have been moved to a seven, um just being considerate of the health of the tree, I kept it at a six. But like I said, with the cutting of the roots on the opposite side of the lean, it's going to give it more the hazard rating would definitely go up after they cut the holding holding roots on the opposite side.
Okay, so the tree leans into the street, you'd have to cut the roots on the uh sidewalk side, correct?
Yes.
Which could potentially increase the leaning of the tree.
It would definitely weaken weaken the holding structure of the whole tree.
Okay, and then that leaves me with tree number was it number nine, is that where I was?
Number seven.
Thank you. Um, so this one is a number six, this one has the root system exposed. Um, any it the notes here say a minimum ten inch excavation to replace the sidewalk. Do you have a picture of that one, Justin?
Um.
Tree seven?
I bet I do.
He didn't do a cross section on that one.
No, we do have a cross section for tree number seven.
Oh, you do? Okay, great.
Okay, so when you excavate for this, whoops.
Here's the cross section.
Okay, so you're not you're not uh increasing the, not the incline, the reverse, you're not dropping the sidewalk in this case, right?
Right.
Okay, um, and the concern is that the roots are above ground?
Yeah, so the the existing roots are above ground and uh what's shown um, more drastically on the street side on the right graphic is just the excavation uh on or at the edge of the pavement for the new pavements soil and the under drain. So what's shown in red here is what's slated or what would need to be excavated in order to build the new road.
Okay, so I guess my other question here are all the trees that are not being cut. There are still, are there are there any trees, let me rephrase, are there any trees remaining in the parkway that have this same structure sidewalk, tree, street that we're not cutting right now?
Yes, so this is, I mean, this is a pretty typical section, uh, but I I believe the other trees were determined to be healthy enough that they could withstand this kind of construction.
That's what I tried to say in the beginning of my remarks, which is any tree that is in the public uh that is in the parkway along this section of Green Street is likely to be impacted in some way, these trees, the combination of, you know, either their proximity to um, you know, a a corner or um or their their general physical condition, they were determined to 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 be at greater risk um because of the construction and so or in a few cases, they were actually in the footprint of an improvement that was going in.
Okay, um, I guess, you know, out of all the explanations and and so forth, um, this tree number seven, I guess, is my my question mark. I think all the other trees could kind of uh gone through kind of my list of rationale, but I'd like to hear what other council members have to say, so thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Um, Bill Brown and then Dennis.
Um, yeah, I uh I don't have really any specific tree um, other than one that's already on the other side where they're constructing, I think three oh six West Green. It's one of those kind of middle age um oak trees that still has a lot of potential in it, I think I'm more partial to those than I am to these um, hundred fifty year old maples that are probably not gonna last more than twenty years, whether we do anything or not. So I guess I'm a little interested in in how we could might be able to improve the process to save that kind of tree in the future. It's too late already to say that one. As far as when we when we purchase easements or or negotiate the easements, do we always just offer the square price per square foot of assessed value in the neighborhood, is that if there's a pretty basic calculation where you assess the value of the land, the average land value and and place a value on it and that's what you offer and did you get the impression from talking any to any of these people that price would really make any difference if we could offer a couple thousand dollars more, would it make a difference? Or did they just think, well, I don't want the tree, so I'm not gonna give you the easement?
So I could, I I think I I might be um the best one to talk about the process. So there's a there's a fairly rigorous process that you have to follow because of because it's an I dot, we're using I dot standards, so um, because of my background, I had to get, I had to take um an online training, but I have background in real estate valuation. And um, they're they're pretty strict about, and we use sales, we didn't just use um we didn't use some real estate assessments, we used sales. And then there's a, you know, there there's a very strong expectation of a of a degree of uniformity about how um how the prices or how the values are set and then and then the prices that get paid need to reflect that. Um, so the opportunity to uh sweeten the pot was really limited. Um, that that's because it's we had to use I dot standards. If we were, if it was a completely local project, we'd have a little bit more flexibility in um in how we did the valuations and how we negotiated the easements. But um in the in the two cases where we were not able to um negotiate easements, it had nothing to do with price. It had everything to do with with um the the folks wanting the trees gone, they don't want the trees.
Okay, and could it, uh I I I appreciate all the efforts you you've done, I do think that um everybody involved in this progress, in this project has had trees in mind. Um, I know when we when we looked at the initial giants in twenty fifteen, they said, um, you know, this is gonna, we're gonna have to remove some trees, we're also gonna have to remove some parking, so these are things that, you know, we're gonna have to work through. Um, and they I think they did try to minimize that and I appreciate MTD being cooperative and moving that bus stop even though it's probably taking down the the two largest and and well, one of them was beautiful until just a couple years ago, it went downhill pretty quick, but the two uh big maples in the eight hundred block of uh of Green Street, I think, are some of the uh largest and and potentially beautiful, the first one um had some cables in it and I think trees can live a long time with cables, but then when I read on that it was hollow sounding and started to have bad branching and stuff, I understand um the decision to take those away and leave the the more middle age um healthy trees on the northeast corner there. So moving the bus stop, I think did help there, even though it take down those two trees. I did um look up who used to live there in front because that wasn't always an apartment building, it was A M Buswell, I thought that was kind of ironic, Buswell, because we're gonna have a bus, a a nice bus stop there, but A M Buswell was also chief of the Illinois Water Survey, this was in nineteen twenty-nine, I I got out my handy city directory, nineteen twenty-nine city directory and looked it up and uh so seventy, no, was that eighty, ninety-one years ago? Um, those trees, I'm sure were there, I don't know how big they were, maybe uh maybe Kevin Sanderson would know, but um he was also chief of the Illinois Water Survey at the time and was actually a a sustainability advocate advocate himself. He uh was a a big proponent of ana- anaerobic tur- uh fermentation of uh uh plant products like corn stalks and stuff to turn them into methane gas for fuel. So um it's ironic and and those two, those two points anyway, um. So I guess as far as the process goes, I I still think there ought to be, if it's if we couldn't offer him a sweetener with price, then maybe some kind of design option where you you add a a bench or something, I would that that law office, you'd think that, you know, if you had a nice bench and tree there, people would hang out and notice the law office, I don't know. You you'd think that there could be some amenities that might might appeal to people. But if, you know, if nothing worked, nothing worked. I wonder if the tree commission, if there might be a tree commission role in the future, if we wanted to add something. Um, because there's gonna be projects like this, the one I'm thinking of right now is Florida Avenue um that needs to be completely reconstructed between Lincoln and and Race, there's a lot of nice older trees on the north side of Florida there. Um, so there's gonna be other projects like this that may involve removal of old trees and if uh we can get some input from the tree commission and maybe some ideas on on ways to redesign it or to work with homeowners uh further in advance to try to save trees, uh maybe there's something there, so maybe that's something that the tree commission could put on their agenda for discussion if they um would like to, if they would like us to add a role for them in the decision process on on how to save more trees in these in these reconstruction projects. On the on the thirty easements, we did attain along Green Street. Do you know how many of those were actually successful tree saving easements? I know most, a lot of them were probably because the sidewalk was gonna be a foot wider here and there for bus stops or for the flare at the end, I know the library and and the township both had to agree to an easement, so that was probably some of those, but do you know how many actually, um, I know Dan Newman said you negotiated one with him, were there others?
There there were definitely others, I I at the moment, I mean, we could, we can get that number for you.
But there were a few.
Yeah, there was more, there was more than, there's more than one, that's for sure.
Okay. Um. So, yeah, I think that's uh, that's mostly uh, I know with the rating system, from what I understand, if it's a, if it follows the same kind of system that um the Forest Service follows, it does depend on where the tree is, so a a tree in in similar health, the same health on Green Street versus the same tree in the park might get a higher number because there's more risk, because if a branch falls from a tree on Green Street, it might hit a car or a pedestrian. So um that's why we see more trees in parks, I guess, with uh broken branches and owls living them in them and things like that, um, because they don't have the same um need to take it down because um, because the rating does depend on the risk, so it it's, you know, it's a hard life living on Green Street um as a tree. I I think the ones that have have been there for a long time have have really provided a lot of good use, um, and and I think we also all recognize that the benefit to the trees goes way beyond the the dollar amount in the eco valuation, the few hundred dollars a year. Um, it is a big psychological benefit and there have been studies showing how much um the green infrastructure uh improves our lives and improves our our knowledge through education and and our whole our whole sense of well-being and all that, I I think we we all uh understand that. So, yeah, I I I think that's about all I have to say on that, thanks.
Uh, Dennis?
Yeah, thank you, let me see if I have, have I unmuted myself?
You're you're audible.
Oh, my, okay, very good. Um, so I don't know, I just wanna, okay, I'll I'll say thank you for the um more detailed explanation, I appreciate Carol Mitten making some more information available to us. You know, I I would say that it was it didn't give people very much time to uh assimilate, you know, the effect of this information or even to understand truly what uh which trees in particular were finally decided upon to be removed. I know it's been said that, oh, people could have gone to a meeting at um, you know, in two thousand fifteen to uh learn about the trees and you know, you know, learn that some would be removed. Of course, things have changed since then and that was five years ago and um, most of the focus of the EMCOR project has all been in Champaign, except for that part which has been at the university between Wright Street and Lincoln. And um, you know, what I noticed about the Wright Street to Lincoln section of EMCOR is that uh I don't see any even new trees being planted in along the parkway in front of the university. What we have there is a totally highway um highway infrastructure, very well planned out, but uh there has been no insulation of any kind of greenery along that place, whether it's been in the parkway or on the other side of the parkway by the university. And I I suppose I assume that the the city of Urbana is not responsible for the lack of green infrastructure that's that's taken, um, that hasn't been installed in that section. But we do have a lot of beautiful trees uh between Lincoln and downtown Urbana. And uh people have appreciate the canopy that we have there and it's an important one. Um, and so we're getting a lot of response for people who realize now maybe as facts have become more relevant in the last month, that there will be significant tree loss. When you consider that as you enter the that section of the neighborhood on Green Street on the in the eight hundred and seven hundred block, quite a few significant trees will be removed, so it's gonna open up the space and it's gonna be um a completely different feeling as you enter into the city, um, the city residential area as compared to where where it is today. So the effect's gonna be significant visually. Just one thing about about sustainability, um, a tree that's coming down, tree number one, it's slated for removal because of the expansion of the MTD platform. It's a sugar maple, it's sixty-one feet to seventy feet tall. Um, its ecological value is very high because it removes four hundred and eighty-nine pounds of uh greenhouse gas and captures another seven hundred and eighty-one pounds of greenhouse greenhouse gas a year. If it were to be replaced by um a a tree that was even as high as twenty feet tall, the greenhouse gas capturing per year by by the new tree, this sapling that replaces it will be twelve pounds. That's a loss, a loss as far as value go for eliminating greenhouse gases in our community of a ninety-eight percent. The root system absorbs in this tree, number one, four thousand four thousand, four hundred and fifteen gallons of water per year as it absorbs water from the soil from rain and downpour. The new sapling that will replace it will conserve thirty-eight gallons of, of water per year. It's based on an example A, which is a twenty-foot tall tree, a bir, a bir oak on the same block just across the street. So the wa, so the water retention quality that we are gonna lose is ninety-nine point one-four percent of the value of the first tree that we're taking out. So it's not a small thing about the ecology and the balance of loss and gain when we are replacing um, a very large mature tree that's very functional as far as its, its ecological value in the community to a sapling. I just wanna say that generally because we're taking out significant number of to, taller trees. The community has, of course, responded to its, its love and concern for the trees. Uh, you know, mostly it's, it's, uh, an aesthetic hit that the, that street's gonna take. And people respond to the fact that they hate to see what seems to be a healthy tree with a full crown of leaves uh, reduced and sawn down. And probably some of these trees wouldn't be impacted at all if we didn't do the new sidewalk. And where we have, uh, managed to achieve easements, I'm very pleased that the city has taken some time to do it. But I would just like to, uh, share a story that comes from, uh, Don Newman, who's, uh, who the city approached, uh, concerning the tree in front of his house. And he shared with me the fact that when the city first approached him and told him that the tree would be removed so that the ADA compliance would be reached before the corner. And also that, uh, because of the sidewalk, they wanted to, to acquire some of his property for the wider sidewalk. He said that he had asked the staff to show him where, where in the, in the literature the required ADA, uh, compliance required the, the removal of his tree. Uh, and when I insisted to quote, he says, what, that they provide me, uh, quoted an excerpt from the ADA document that specifically, uh, answered why they needed a twenty-foot easement around the tree on its property. They were not able to, to provide one. So it seems like, okay, this was sort of like a, like a slightly questionable response by city staff. I don't know if staff wasn't well, well versed in kind, this kind of conversation. Well, you know, Mr. Newman wants to protect the trees in front of his house. And so he was willing to grant an easement. But the original easement that they requested, the city requested of him was five feet by twenty-five feet or an area of a hundred and twenty-five square feet. And he felt that that was excessive. And ultimately, the city reduced its request to him to save the tree to two feet by twenty feet. So it, it almost cut in half or, well, we, you know, cut in a third, the amount of, um, easement that they demanded of him. And yet the tree is able to be retained by this reduced easement. So I'm wondering if the city approached other city, uh, property owners with what might have been felt as an excessive request. And whether other people as similarly to Mr. Newman was able to barter down the amount of property that they were losing and still retain the trees. Cause otherwise they would not be able to retain them according to the city at all and the tree would be cut down.
As I said earlier, in the two cases where we were not able to negotiate easements, in those two cases, the people involved did not want the trees retained. So they weren't interested in giving an easement of any size.
I understand that, but I was wondering if there might have been other people who might have agreed to an easement to allow the sidewalk to be moved slightly forward onto their property and whether they really had been asked to, to sacrifice quite a lot of, of, uh, land rather than maybe the necessary amount. So that's the question I got. I mean, the only reason why I can even ask that is because of the story that, uh, Mr. Newman shared with me. That he felt that the, the ask of the city was pretty exceptional. And indeed, it turned out to be that they needed much less than they asked for.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, I'm not done yet. I have one more comment to make.
One more comment? Okay.
So I agree with Mary Alice that we should try to save some of the trees. Uh, I feel that I would love to see tree number five reserved as well because it seems to be that it's well centered in the parkway. It has a straight bark. There may be some damage at the bottom, but it's narrow damage and I don't think it's going to affect the actual survival of the tree for years to come. And I think that the, you know, that tree should be looked at again. And I agree that any tree that we can save, I think, shows good faith in the community. You know, I hate to say it, that if we can save one tree because we respond to the community's desire to preserve the urban environment, the urban forest canopy, that we should take that opportunity and do it. And, uh, the tree that we're talking about, which is tree number seven, I believe it is, um, as the prime suspect in being a, a tree that could be saved in this process, um, would, it wouldn't, it probably wouldn't have been my original first choice, but I think that, that any tree that you can save, I think, shows good faith that you're listening. And if there's no detriment to the tree, if the tree is rated at six, that's an acceptable rating for survival of the tree. So I would suggest that the city council members, um, urge the mayor, I think I'm gonna say that right now. I urge the mayor to reconsider, uh, and to save one or two trees along the corridor because I think the people in the community would really appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Sharice? Sharice, your hand is up.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I, I really don't have, uh, any, anything to add. And I do have questions regarding, uh, the Siberian, um, elm. Is Kevin still online? Is he still around?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, um, the, the question that I have is basically, um, because it's not a native, my understanding too regarding the whole tree, tree, um, city, um, uh, mission is that we try to have as many native trees or we try to have all native trees. So is one of the, uh, uh, qualifications for the removal for the Siberian elm also because it's not native?
Not necessarily because it's not native, but it's just susceptible to ice storms, wind damage, um, location where it was leaning over the road. The native, native is for when we're replanting, we try to, we wanna try to hit a native, native number for replanting.
Okay. And my other question is the tree that's got, is, is that's not the tree that has the beehive in it, right?
No.
Um, okay, the tree that has the bees, um, will that be removed in a way that the, the bees will not be harmed? Will they be donating? Would that area, that particular, uh, ecosystem, so to speak, kind of be given to U of I or what's gonna happen? You just gonna tear it down and the bees are scatter and what's gonna happen? It was something, it was oddly something that I was talking to someone about because they asked me, he said, well, what's gonna happen to the bees? And it's like, oh, gosh, okay. Had thought about that and brought it to my attention. So I thought I would, um, bring it to one of you guys and just try to find out what, what's gonna happen with the bees. Because you do kinda have a, a whole environment there and is, are there any, is there any plans for that? Are we just gonna?
I'm not, that was just, and I'm not sure what the contractor has planned for the bee removal. That would be the contractor's decision.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no provision in the contract for the bee removal. However, we do have resources for, uh, the responsible removal of bees. Um, so we can, the city can, um, can look into that, uh, do our best to preserve, um, that.
Yeah, because, well, I was just thinking, you know, there is such a, um, we have so many, uh, collapsed beehives and so on and so forth, uh, happening nowadays. I would think that would be kind of important to try to preserve that.
Okay.
Yep, we do have bee collectors on, on file to be contacted.
Okay. Is it?
Okay, thank you. I see no more council member comments. I do wanna respond, um, to the community and to the city council. And I especially want to talk to, um, our young citizen, Michael Tassin, our re, our recent Urbana high school graduate. I, I really want to let you know that our city values trees. That is evident in everything we do in terms of construction. We invest a tremendous amount in the landscape recycling center, which is part of our own tree management, um, uh, program. We have a tree commission. We're a tree city. We plant trees. We fundraise for trees. And we value trees as much as anyone who has written in, and that's evident when you look around our city. Um, the corridor on Green Street is not the welcoming, beautiful, green, lush corridor only because of the trees in the city right of way. There are trees in all the private property up and down that corridor and those will stay. Those are not being cut down. They're not being removed and they'll continue to grow. And I believe it's over sixty percent of the trees that are nineteen inches or more in diameter along the Green Street in the right of way are being retained along with the smaller trees. So by, by any means, most of the trees in the Green Street corridor are staying, large and small. We made many decisions along the way, um, to, to, that preserved the trees. Um, the street isn't being widened. It very well could have, but instead, you know, city council with our recommendation voted to remove the parking along that corridor instead. So people are giving up parking on both sides of Green Street to keep the width of the street itself the same. And again, the easements we retained, many of those helped route the sidewalk around the trees. It's gonna be a curving sidewalk. It's actually gonna be unusual. Probably the only one in the city that we built on a block like this that's, that's curving. Everything we've done on this project has had an eye toward preserving what we value, which is the, the urban canopy. And the other thing, the new part of this project, what this project will bring also reflects what we value. We value multimodal transportation. We value all ways of, uh, of connectivity. We value, um, the ability of people to get from one point to the next, whether they're, um, can run a marathon or whether they're using a walker, whether they're pushing a baby stroller, whether they're riding a skateboard or, um, how, riding a bicycle. We value, um, serving our community and everyone in it to the best of our ability. Um, and again, you know, we, we, we've invested a great deal in our urban forest and maintaining it. We're one, we're, most cities, I think it's safe to say, a lot, I, well, I don't wanna say things I don't know, but many, many cities don't have in-house arbor divisions or in-house city arborists or in-house people who actually climb the trees and, and, and maintain the trees. And the city of Urbana does. And I'll tell you, that's, that's, um, it's, it's not an inexpensive investment, but it's because we value our trees that we, we do it. Year ago, yesterday, well, year ago Memorial Day, Memorial Day of twenty nineteen, a tornado ripped through South Urbana and it touched down in my backyard. So I know what it's like to lose trees and I know how much it hurts. And, and it ripped a hundred-year-old oak tree right out of my neighbor's yard. And that provoked, provided most of the shade for my yard. So I know what the loss of trees means. And that's one of the reasons we've spent a great deal of time raising money, seeking funds to have money to replant these trees. And along Green Street, we're taking out nineteen trees. We're planting forty-seven trees with an emphasis on native species, which should be stronger and last longer and be more resilient than some of the trees on that street now. And they should be better for pollinators. And a lot of the trees that were planted as urban trees over the years, like Bradford pears or stuff like that are terrible for pollinators and we've discovered that. So an emphasis on native trees in our corridors is a good thing for the pollinators. And that's part of our overall sustainability plan. So we as city leaders have to, um, balance the many competing needs. I can tell you, I get as many complaints about the condition of our streets as I get about how, you know, how people value trees. So we, and, and the ability of people to move from one place to the next. And we have to measure, we have to balance the competing needs and the important needs of people in our community. And that's what this project reflects. I think it's a great example of taking the needs, looking at the needs and coming up with a good solution. Is it, is it perfect? Are we saving every tree? No. But we are providing absolutely improvements in mobility and infrastructure and function and connectivity. And I think when visitors come to our community and they, they are on Lincoln Avenue and they come to Green Street and they turn to their left or turn to their, to the east and they look at Green Street, they'll say, this is a community that values connectivity, that values mobility, that, um, values trees and values, um, investing in infrastructure to service in the future. So, so I think this is, 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 is an excellent project and it certainly reflects Urbana's values. So that's it for that discussion and, uh, Mary Alice.
I just had a quick question. So I know that our arbor division has been really focused on removing, uh, the trees that have been infected with ash bor. And it's been one of the reasons why we haven't been able to get to as many of the, the hazard trees to cut down some of the branches that might, uh, cause a hazard. So what I wanna know is, in terms of the bigger picture, in terms of making sure that we are, um, taking care of our, our tree canopy, um, is there now, are we caught up with all the ash borer? Do we, have we now freed up the arborist's resources for us to be able to go back and maintain those other trees?
Kevin, is, no, Kevin's here.
Yeah, our, our ash removals are completed. Um, we still have some that we are treating to try to save. Um, we are down a crew member, so we are kinda limited of what we can actually do. But we are focusing, trying to get back on to preventive maintenance to try to preserve our canopy.
All right, thank you.
And I would remind everyone, we are in the midst of a pandemic, which has affected every single thing we do in the city, including our, our labor force and our ability, uh, everything. So I, I ask people to have patience in that respect too. We are not out of the woods yet, so to speak. I am long shot. Okay, Dennis, you had a question?
Yeah, um, would it be possible to, uh, to, um, make an effort in the future when, uh, projects that affect the, uh, the streetscapes as we approach other neighborhoods with other projects in the future, as Bill was recommending, seeing some on Florida Avenue and others? Would it be possible to have, uh, a neighborhood-focused, um, meeting to go over the details of the planned construction and reconfiguration, including the effect it may have on some tree removals at a time when the construction is still be in the planning stage, uh, as we do for other projects and developments, um, where we invite the neighbors to come and talk to the developer and give some feedback and learn the process that they're going to be experiencing in their neighborhood. Just as before, just before they start breaking ground and, and making the changes so that the, what I, what I missed here, I think, was, uh, uh, an opportunity to interact with the neighbors on the street in a way that would be more meaningful to them as the phase five was, uh, approaching, uh, development stage. as the Phase Five was approaching development stage.
Yes, we can, we, yes, we, and we norma, we do that typically on every project. So absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I think if we had done that in this instance, there would have been a lot more ability for people to absorb the changes and to make their comments earlier. And we wouldn't necessarily have to be doing it in what is seems to be the, the last, last possible second before the streets remove completely.
Carol, did you want to comment?
I, I do. And, and the, I would say that the EMCOR project is atypical because things were set in motion five years ago. And to, and we, and we have to recognize that. And, and that included the, the tree removal and try, and to have people think that, that fundamental aspects of this project could be revisited at this late date. It, it, it simply isn't possible. That's not a typical project for us. We're not typically in partnership with all of these other entities, and we have much more control. We'll be talking about a project when we talk to you next week about the CIP that I think will be a very good candidate for getting lots of input about priorities and trees being one of them. So we'll have a good example, and you, you can help us puzzle through how to, how to approach that one. So.
You'd make a big difference, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any. Next is the Committee of the Whole report, Dennis.
Yes, that's right. We had the Committee of the Whole last week, and we forwarded three different items to the city council here tonight for approval if that's the fate of these items. And the first one is ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four dash zero two two. An ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen to seventeen, regarding schedule of fees subsection A, liquor licenses. And this bears a, this would be through the fees through July first, twenty twenty, coming up through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And this was presented last week, and for the committee, I would move approval.
I'll second, I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Just a note, last week, both Elizabeth and Beth Beatty are attending high school graduations tonight, so finance is not represented here. But I can tell you that the two changes that you requested, that you directed us to make last week have been made. So that was a reduction of five hundred dollars in the class R and T one license was done, oh, R and T two, sorry. It went from three thousand to twenty-five hundred, and then the reduction in the fee for the incubator license was to one thousand dollars for the first six months and two thousand for the second six months. Otherwise, everything else is the same. Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank not only city staff, but also city council for looking at these license fees fairly, making some adjustments last week. And so I really appreciate all the work that everybody did on this.
Jared?
Just echoing Mary Alice, thanks for working with us on this, and glad we got, we're able to get good feedback and come to a mutually agreeable solution and fee structure. And you guys did a great job overall on this project. Thanks a lot.
Well, this has taken fourteen months from beginning to end, so I'm glad to be, well, we're at the beginning, actually. We're at the end of one phase, that's the beginning of the next, and.
The end of the beginning.
Okay, we'll go with that, yeah. Anyway, thanks for everything, and staff did a terrific job, and particularly Kate Levy, Jim Simon, and finance department, and actually myself. I was, I, I was rewriting this as well, so. We're done with it, and we're ready to implement. So any other comments? All right, all those in favor? Well, let's see. We need the clerk to call the roll.
City council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Very good. The next item is Resolution number twenty twenty dash oh five dash zero two three R. A resolution approving Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System annual budget, which was presented last week. This is for the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, and for the city, for the committee of the whole, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any comments? Questions? Is there a discussion? I'm exhausted. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Last item is an ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh five dash zero two eight. This is an ordinance approving an amendment to the city of Urbana Consolidated and Annual Action Plan for the year twenty twenty-nine, no, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, and the Citizen Participation Plan. This comes from Community Development. And for the committee, I move approval.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Sharice? She's muted. She's muted.
Yes, yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of special committees.
Is this where I talk about the census?
Sure, you can talk about the census. There is, actually, there is a subcommittee in city staff who has been working on this, so yes, absolutely.
Well, I just want, I just want to kind of lift them up and help them out if at all possible. I've been trying to keep track of my ward's response rate regarding the census, and I'm just going to start with what I'm saying. Okay, since, the census is, I know we're doing all this COVID nineteen, we're in a pandemic, we're in, in a difficult time. And this is for anybody that's still listening as well, I, I, you know, that's still watching the, the, still involved with the meeting. The census return is very important. It's extremely important that you return your census forms, or you go online and do your census. It, it, it represents a count of everyone in the United States. But particularly, let me just say how it affects our city of Urbana really quickly. It's fourteen hundred dollars per person that the, the city of Urbana will get if you turn in your census. If you don't, that's fourteen hundred dollars is lost for ten years. Ten years, that's fourteen thousand dollars per person that does not respond to the census. And in my ward, and particularly, there's only been thirty-nine point six percent response rate. And on one side, on one part of it, fifty-four point four percent in another part of the ward. If you think that it's not important, it's, maybe you need to think about this, and then particularly with everything that's been happening since we've been involved with this pandemic. Monies from the census will affect monies for schools, your monies for police and fire department and emergency services, your monies that will be going into infrastructure, your money, and that's throughout the entire city. It also affects the number of people, or your representatives, how many representatives you have on the state and federal level. And so it's extremely important that, that this get response. And with COVID, we are going to, we are, we're already having a difficult time right now with COVID, okay, financially. Imagine if you don't return your, your, your census now, and what it's going to look like in five years. And we'll be digging ourselves right back out of a hole again. So we really need to have those responses. In Illinois, it's a sixty-five point two percent response rate. Champaign County, sixty-two point nine percent. Urbana, sixty percent, sixty point seven percent. And we really need a higher rating than that. And we've, in the past, have gotten higher ratings than that from what, what I look at when I go online. So regardless of what your party affiliation might be, what your beliefs might be, what tribe you come from, or, or whether or not you decide to vote, or whatever you do, whatever your cultural background is, it does not matter. What does matter is that you be counted, and that you be counted here. And for all the things that we, people email us about, you know, the city needs to do this, or you're not doing this, or you're not doing that, well, all that costs money. And we are already going to probably be in another deficit. And having, being able to have representation and funding for many of the things that you, that one might want, want, a citizen may want to happen regarding the city is going, nobody does it for free. So, you, you know, you want more different training for police, then guess what, fill out the census form. You want, you want better infrastructure, oh, oh, fill out your census form. This would be a good time for you to try to remember that, for anyone to remember that. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we actually will probably, we'll need to do an update on the census in the next, once the budget is done, I think it's time. You know, we'll kind of do an update on the budget. Everything has been delayed due to COVID. Just the other areas where we're seeing low.
Peace man, beefo motor, obesity, giga diaper.
Okay.
In areas where we're seeing low response are the areas on campus, especially where the dorm, the residence halls in Urbana are located. So that's another area that is, is a real problem area at the point, at the moment, and we'll be focusing on that as well.
Yes, and I just want to.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I thought that the, that the University of Illinois was reporting the numbers from, from quarters.
They are supposed to.
They are supposed to. Will that increase our response rate?
I, yes, but it's, it's, everything has been slowed down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the other, the, the other thing I, I just wanted to say is myself, I, I, I put out fifty signs in my ward, fifty yard signs all over to remind people to fill out their census forms. And even though, even doing that is a little bit of an increase, but as can, can, considering the fact there were none out, and, and even while I was putting those signs out, I had, I had a couple of people saying, oh, are they still doing the census? I thought that was over with.
It's, it's just getting started, really. They will be contacted. Anyway, it'll be, it'll be a long process. Thank you, Sharice. All right, reports of officers. I did want people to know that, you know, you probably heard that the governor is about to move us into Phase Three in the pandemic recovery, and he announced last Wednesday or Thursday a lot of information, including the outdoor dining, outdoor service for restaurants and bars. And he had a target of May twenty-ninth is when that would be available to, to, to businesses. That didn't give, that came without any advance notice to the cities, and it came without any guidelines until they were released. I believe it was Sunday or Monday. We, staff has been working double time to put things into place to provide the flexibility that we'll need for our restaurants and bars, and we're on track to do that. It's, it's an enormous amount of work, and it's not just a simple matter of, you know, setting tables out in the sidewalk. We have to look at, we have to look at a lot of things, but it's going to happen, and we're working closely with our business community to make that happen. But again, I ask for patience. It might not be perfect this weekend, but, you know, we'll get there. And, and I know the business community and the public are looking forward to this, but we want to do it in as safe and thoughtful and intentional way that we can. Okay. We have one item of new business, and that's ordinance number twenty twenty, which is zero five zero two nine, which is the emergency order number twenty zero three, which was the temporary suspension of special events permits. And this was an identical, order was passed in Champaign. And this temporarily suspends the holding of public and special events on any city-owned leased or operated public property through September seventh, twenty twenty. And the events that this effects are the, mostly the large-scale events involving drinking and eating and hundreds and thousands of people crowding into a relatively small space. And it also affects the temporary liquor license and temporary special events permits that, 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 for similar things. And again, this was done, one, reflecting where we are in the reopening of the state. Number two, considering the public health guidelines and the recommendations that we're getting. And number three, even if we're moving into Phase Four, according to the governor's guidelines, it's still gathering some fifty people or less. So again, these large-scale events involving thousands of people, hundreds to thousands of people are, are, just for the summer, are, are suspended. So we're looking for a motion to ratify this emergency order. Sharice?
Well, I have a motion then to approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero five dash zero two nine, emergency order zero dash oh three, temporary suspension of issuance of special events permits. Yeah. Well, I move to approve it.
Move to, Bill?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion. I do have some good question. Okay. For, I know for, they have released guidelines for recreation where you could have groups of ten, multiple groups of ten separated by thirty feet and things like that. So theoretically, I think you could probably have a walkathon. It'd be hard to organize, but you'd have to have people take off in groups of ten or less at a time, and then separate the waves by a few minutes so that they don't accumulate. So especially once we get into the next phase and the rest of the summer, is there going to be any flexibility for people to propose safe events? Or is this like a blanket?
There is, there is flexibility. If you look on section five, there is flexibility. But the other thing that I didn't mention is, a lot of these events require sponsors, and many times it's business sponsors. And the other thing we've been hearing from the community, from the business community, is, is well, number one, they've been devastated by this thing. And so the funds available to sponsor events are also an issue as well. And that's another factor here. But yeah, there, there may be flexibility, but at this point, we don't know.
Okay, thanks.
And again, the, the key to all of this is, 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 there is so much uncertainty. Dennis? You're, you're muted.
Thanks for, for letting me know that. So I think I did express to, to you and also other members of the council that it, I, I guess I would hope that we would have the fortunate result that the pandemic would begin to dissipate as we approached the fall. And one of the great casualties of the early fall is going to be the Labor Day parade. I noticed that the extension that you were going to be talking about and passing perhaps today. that you were going to be talking about and passing perhaps today actually includes exactly the day, the day of Labor Day, the 7th of September, as the final day. And my question was that, okay, if that was the extension, what makes the next day different that you could potentially allow a gathering? But I guess what we're going to find out is, as the summer progresses, is any kind of relaxing in the, the number of people who can come together to enjoy an experience, including perhaps a, a parade that's done with cars only and no people walking or something? Is it going to be possible to imagine in the future a reconsideration, so, so we could enjoy what is traditionally a lot of fun to do in the community, the Labor Day Parade?
Yes, I mean, Article, Article 4 of this, the language says, if prior to that date and time the governor suspends or terminates requirements on social distancing, size of public gathering limitations, or other steps taken to prevent or minimize the spread of COVID-19, then in effect, the city may commence issuing special event permits and allowing special events to occur on city-owned leased or operated real property. The, the thing with the parade, it's not just a parade. The parade, the Labor Day traditionally is followed by the large gathering in the park afterwards, which, which is a, is a big social event involving hundreds of people, food, drinks, et cetera. And I, before we passed this, I did talk with Matt Kelly of the AFL-CIO about that very event, and he understood completely. We're all disappointed, but, you know, he understood. But again, we are putting safety first this year. Every year, but this year, we're putting safety first when it comes to these special events. Mary Alice and then Sharice?
I have kind of a broader question. So when we passed the emergency ordinance, basically giving you the ability to do these emergency orders, I believe what we said was that the governor either had to lift the emergency declaration, or you would lift the emergency declaration for the City of Urbana. But now that we have all these different phases, I, I'm wondering how the phases interact with the emergency declaration from the governor? Because it would seem to me, based on the phases, that it would be lifted once we've reached Phase Five, but I don't know if there's been any clarity in terms of when that could potentially happen, since we're going through incremental changes? Do you have any?
From what I read describing Phase Five, it's herd immunity and vaccinations, and, you know, pretty much full steam ahead. And I don't see that happening before the end of this year, for sure. We'll be lucky if we get, you know, happily into Phase Four.
No, and I agree, and I guess that was my point, is that Phase Five is going to take a while to achieve. Because it basically means life is back, you know, life goes back to the way we were living before, hopefully.
It's never going back there, but it'll be-
Social distancing rules anymore.
It'll be less, it'll, it'll be different, but yeah.
It'll be different, absolutely. So is, so does that mean that the emergency declaration, in your belief, will be enacted until we reach Phase Five, which is in the distant future?
This particular emergency declaration or the overall?
The overall.
I don't know. I mean, you know, I, I look at this as we're navigating from point to point. So at this point, we, it, it's in effect, and I think that's the decision that we will have to wait to make until we're a little bit farther down the road.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Sharice?
Yeah. Okay, so, um, I, I just kind of wanted to, to comment also to, to what Dennis was talking about, parading, and I can enjoy a, a good parade like anybody else, but it, it is kind of one of these issues where if it was just empty streets and us, you know, people parading, like, you know, in cars, in isolated, maybe that would work okay. On some level. But there are spectators, there's not, you know, spectators to every parade. And that's something that cannot be controlled, as far as the social distancing. Is everyone going to cooperate, wear a mask? Do we really want to try to regulate and enforce those types of, of protections right now? And basically, who's going to do it, even if, you know, do we have enough, enough law enforcement or regulators, so to speak, to even try to do something like that? And also, you know, I, everything is so unpredictable right now. I really don't have a problem with this going up till Labor, Labor Day. I'm sorry that it would have to. I think that had we had more information and more, more support as systematically with any of this, then this may be something that we could have, could have overcome in, in just a few months. But I, I don't think that it, it's just so unpredictable right now. Everything is so unpredictable because our, our, our federal leadership is unpredictable. So, I'm sorry, you know, I feel with that.
Yeah, and, and the Labor Day Parade is traditionally what they call the candy parade, so you're constantly throwing things out to kids, and it's a high tou, it's a high-touch parade, traditionally, so. Yeah, this is, this has been a tough one.
Yeah, this is a tough.
But I believe we still need to vote on this. Any other comments or questions? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. With no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.